Good evening, Madam Mayor, everyone. Would you please pray with me? Lord of all, it is the glory of every human being to seek your wisdom and strength. You are admirable in your power and wisdom and truth and for your mercy and grace. Every truly good thing that we know is sourced in you. So, thank you tonight for your gifts that you have given each one here of life, of health, of community, of gifts for leadership and governance. Lord, we thank you for this city, our home, and for those that you have put in place to be servants for the public interest here. Lord, we thank you for this mayor and this council, for these department heads, this city manager, and for so many others, even in the seats here tonight, that you give their time and talent for the welfare of this city. Lord, you care about integrity, about wise planning, about justice, and we ask that you give both the leaders of this city and its citizens the humility to seek these things from you, and may they find your mercy and grace that you offer freely. And so, tonight, we ask that you'd help each one of us here to act honorably before you and with deference and grace toward each other, for you have made us to speak and act with both love and truth. I ask all this in Christ the Lord. Amen.
So, now, we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Alderman Simmons Clem?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Simmons is absent. Parker?
Here.
Stacey?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Sanders?
Here.
And Sellers?
Here.
And we'll wait until Alderman Stacey is able to get up to her chair, because she leads the pledge. Madam Clerk, could you please make note that at 6:03, Alderman Simmons arrived. And then, if you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Stacey.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on July 21st, 2025. Is such a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number three is recognition of service awards. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Rick Lindeman has been with the city for 10 years. He started out as a swing shift operator at the wastewater treatment plant. He is now the chief wastewater operator. He's also received his Class 1 wastewater license, as well as his Class B water treatment license, and we're very appreciative for his service to the city. Being that he could not make it tonight, that basically concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Item number four is public comments. Madam Clerk, did you have one that you had for reading?
I did. This one was emailed in and relates to Agenda Item Number 24. It is from Kelly Habach. Please consider the following as my letter of support for Grievance 01-2025. I am writing to emphasize the necessity of installing curb ramps to ensure accessibility for individuals who use wheelchairs and others with mobility challenges. Curb ramps are essential for safe and independent navigation across sidewalks and streets. Without them, wheelchair users face significant physical barriers that can prevent them from accessing public spaces freely and safely. These barriers not only compromise mobility, but also dignity and independence. I would also like to reference a previously submitted grievance, 01-2025, specifically concerning the corners of Park Boulevard and Church Street. The lack of curb ramps at these intersections continues to pose serious accessibility issues for community members with mobility impairments. While I appreciate any steps taken so far, this location remains a critical area in need of attention. Installing curb ramps is not only a matter of legal compliance under the ADA, it is a matter of equity and inclusion. These ramps benefit not only wheelchair users, but also individuals using walkers, strollers, bicycles, and delivery carts. They make public spaces safer and more accessible for everyone. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I urge you to prioritize the installation of curb ramps at Park Boulevard and Church Street and take meaningful steps towards creating a more inclusive and accessible environment. Sincerely, Kelly Habach.
And then, we have Ernestine Edmund on a bid package. Not sure if I said that name correctly. Did you want to comment on a bid package? Yeah, that's a bid package.
I just wanted to be here because I am in the midst of all this, because we're in a rental property, and months ago, I got letters saying that the property had been sold.
Okay, okay, so that doesn't have to do with the bid package. So, if you want to talk about rental properties, then you have to wait until the end. Which item number are we talking about?
I asked if I could address you and the council.
Okay, according to public comments.
I appreciate it.
Okay, but if it doesn't have to do with the...
These are you guys' constituents. These are your constituents that are being gentrified out of this town based around properties that have been sold and is increasing their rents. These are your constituents that are going to be homeless with their children, one of whom has been burnt in one of these pieces of property. You guys don't want to hear us? You will hear us one way or the other. You're going to either hear us today and not make these people stay here all night. They've got to go home to their kids and their family and their homes that will no longer be able to exist. I'm passionate about this simply because I've been in that situation. I lived in transitional housing for 18 months, not under the same conditions that they're going through, and you guys need to hear them. All of you need to hear them. You need to listen to what your constituents are saying and what I'm saying to you guys simply. If they don't listen to you, get them out of here. Register, everybody, do the register. Vote them out of their seats. They need to hear you, and if you're not willing to hear you, leave out of this door. Don't let them wait until the last minute to see what they're doing. The city workers that don't have a bad contract, so you get them.
Okay, you are out of order. It has nothing to do... Well, then, you will be asked to leave. Could you please escort her out?
You gotta escort me out. I'll walk out. You just stay there.
For those of you that are standing... For those of you that are standing, I just want to say, we are sorry for the hardships that you are going through, but please know that the city has... I want you to know... You can talk at the end of the public comment if you'd like. You can talk at the end of public comment if you'd like. If you would like to be escorted out as well, that's your choice.
I have PC's in my basement right now.
Chief, if you could handle this. For those of you that have stayed, I would just like to say, I'm sorry for what you're experiencing, but please note that the city has no rent control. We have no right to govern what another business puts out for a price. We don't. There's nothing... We feel bad that you're being increased, but we have no authority to stop them from doing that. So, we will move on. We have other public comments that are on agenda items. I believe, Veronda Scott, you are item number 14.
Yes, I'm going to speak on item 14, but I do think that demolition, item 26, is an important issue and that we are demolishing properties that could be turned into useful rentals, and that is a concern that we should be talking about. But I'm here to talk about the lift station. I was upset about it last time because I've been knowing about the Lam Road TIF and this lift station, which just came up, but that TIF has been in existence since 2003, and Walmart and Menards were forced out there by a handful of white men who bought up land cheap and stuck them out there so that they could collect their property taxes. This is not Walmart or Menards' fault. This is this group of creepy men who dictate what happens in Freeport and steal our property taxes, and so, that's what's happening in the Lam Road TIF. Walmart and Menards' property taxes are now funding a lift station to pump sewage out of there. Now, when that development went in, in 2005, I sat on the Planning Commission. I questioned all of this. Guess what? I was kicked off the Planning Commission because they didn't want to hear what I had to say. That's what happens to people who look up and find out the facts. So, here we are today, paying for a lift station. I just talked to Mr. Steeple, Darren, and I asked, why do we not know how much this is going to cost? Tonight, you're about to approve $234,000 for engineering services. Do you know what that means? It means you're going to pay him to oversee construction for a lift station. Do you know how much a lift station's going to cost you? Do you know how much it costs to run a lift station? I asked Mr. Steeple, and he gave me an answer, which I appreciated. He said it's going to cost around $2.8, $2.3 million, which we do have in the TIF. But that's not the point. Why are we spending the money on a lift station? When they put that development out there, they should have paid for water and sewer. If they didn't have sewer out there, they had no business putting Walmart and Menards out there. And Mr. Boyer, I'm telling you this for your benefit, because you weren't here. I'm not blaming you. I'm bringing you historical information that I hope you will appreciate. So, right now, we've got this same group of creepy thugs who are running developments who want a lift station to get water and sewer out to Mill Race Crossing, 400, 500 acres, which they bought the land cheap, had no water out there, and guess what? Now, we're going to pay for it with those property taxes that Walmart and Menards are paying, that are supposed to be coming to our police, water... Not water, we pay for water. Our police, fire, schools, city. We're supposed to be using those property taxes to pay for our expenses here, but instead, you're being asked to vote now to approve engineering costs so that we can put a lift station, so that these thug developers who are sitting over at the county can run water and sewer out to their development, which doesn't even exist.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if the next one is Miranda Blessing. Are you actually going to speak? No? On demolition, you want to wait? Kenzie Graham, item number 10.
Good evening, Council. My name's Kenzie Graham with State Line Solar on behalf of Harmony UMC. I'd like to address you in terms of item number 10, the approval of the ground-mounted solar array on the property. Mostly, I just wanted to answer the questions that came up from the first reading, that being, why not put solar panels on the roof? Main reason to not put panels on the roof is because it's due to be replaced soon, and that would add extra costs to the church to have to remove them and put them back up at that time. We also moved it to the back of the property to remain out of sight as per the code request, and our sizing of that ground-mounted system does comply with the current ordinances as they are today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Akia Sanders on item number 23.
Let me try to make this as quick as possible. There's a lot to cover. I'm going to show you how God revealed everything on this agenda that you say that don't have nothing to do with it. The root is Wayne Duckman. Wayne is responsible for knocking down these houses that does not have to be knocked down. We are in a housing crisis right now, and we looking at the man to give him some money, a contract after he quit on Freeport. He quit, put his two weeks in, don't want nothing to do with us, but he want $1,000 for 16 hours a week. That's insane. It's insane. We're in a housing crisis. Rob Boyer, it's your time to put on a Superman cape. Try to act like you care about the community. We are a rural community. Rural means you guys have made the rules to fit your needs. Now, it's time to make the rules to fit the community needs and what they actually need. Have you went through those properties and seen if they honestly need to be knocked down? Wayne Duckman is very vindictive. He harasses a lot of people. He gives all kinds of hell to a lot of people only because they are consistent in hustling. He mad because he got to do a job. He done left his job five times. And now, you look, putting on a contract, you want to give him some money for begging him to stay. Feel his position. Last time, you said there was nine people that filled out an application. I can't believe out of those nine people, we don't have one that can do more than 16 hours a week. He's the reason that our whole community is failing. He's the reason that the progress for the Eastside Projects, he's trying to stop that. And your whole election was ran off Chicago slum landlords, and I ain't going to believe that you can't do nothing about one company here and trying to fix it. Make it so it fits the cap. You cannot do 500 to 1,000. You cannot make somebody pay that much. You are in control. Maybe you guys don't care because half of y'all living good, but it's people that need help. Social Security, low-income jobs. You ain't got no jobs here, Rob. Freeport Partnership ain't created a thing, I seen. It's time for somebody to do something that actually does for the community.
Keep your topic on the contract.
It is the contract. Wayne Duckman need to go. You want to hear it again? Wayne Duckman need to go. Wayne Duckman has to go. Don't beg a man to stay that has tore down the community in a way we can't live. Go through the properties once. How often do you go over there? How often do you trail those properties that's being torn down? Mine, for one, didn't need to be torn down. It could have went to some of these families, but instead, he wanted to target me, knock it down, and now, we in a housing crisis. Fix it. Care about it. Don't look down, look up. Look at the people you about to fail. By 2027, you can count your blessings and get out of here.
Cheryl Altman on item number 23.
Mine is also concerning Wayne Duckman and Rob. I've tried to talk to Rob. I have an eight-unit apartment building that can get fixed up, but because Wayne's got to bug up his ass against me too. And Akia, shake your head yes, Wayne. I know it. All these people, eight units, can you imagine how many families I could put in that eight unit? Get off your ass and let us fix this property so that these people have a place to live.
Okay, let's not swear, or you're done. Don't swear at him. At all.
But it's okay that he can rip people off. What am I talking about? You're an exception too. But you guys sit here, these people are looking for homes. Give me the permit so that I can fix this back up. You already stole one of my houses. If you think you're going to get this one, you're going to have a fight.
Next is Jocelyn Risley. I'm sure I'm saying that terribly wrong.
Excuse me, I don't know the rules and regulations. This is my first time attending a meeting like this. I did want to speak on the impact of demolitions and outside takeover.
Okay, but the item that you spoke on is the contract.
Right. And that's part of the demolitions, correct?
No.
No, from 23, 26, and 27?
You wrote down item number 23.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, if you want to talk about the bid package, you want to talk about those eight bid package things?
Yes, the eight and the nine. Is it 26 and 27?
Yeah, if you have something specific about bid package stuff, you can talk about it.
Yes, in addition to the recent rent hikes, it also is including the several properties that have been demolished over the last few years. Is this not the appropriate time to speak about that?
So, those items that are on the agenda about demolition, they're voting to accept a bid to demolish a certain group of properties here. So, if you're talking about old properties, then it's not on point. If you're talking about these properties, then that's on point.
It's in addition to that. It's the big picture of it. I know that there are additional properties that are proposed to being demolished, but it's in addition to what's already been done. They kind of go hand in hand, if you will.
Probably, then, you can certainly talk about that, but it's probably meant for the public comment at the end of the meeting because it's a non-agenda item.
But it's in addition to what... And I don't mean to go back and forth with you and waste more of my allotted time, but it's in addition to the properties that are looking to be demolished because it's causing just a greater strife for the residents of the Freeport community because it leaves even less areas for them to reside, and it is related to the rent increase, which of course is not on the agenda.
Yeah, these are specific addresses.
Yes, I understand.
So, if you want to speak about rent, then that's going to be at the end of the meeting.
I understand that, but as I've stated, it ties to the properties that are being looked at to be demolished. It's what's coming, but they're in related to what has already happened, and it's created a vacuum of sorts. It is these properties that are being... I'm sorry?
I think your comments are going to have to wait till the end because I just don't think... They're really not about the bid packet. The bid packet is who's the lowest bidder, what's the price to demolish it, etc.
I understand that that's your perspective on it, and I will respect that, so I'd be happy to speak later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments.
Yes, I arrived late. I would like to make a public comment regarding Agenda Item Number 36, the executive session.
We don't have executive session. It's always a standing item. We don't have anything on there. Just so you know, we're not going into executive session.
I understand that, but I would still like to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Robert Holt. I am the AFSCME Council 31 Staff Representative for Local 3367, the municipal employees of the city in Freeport. I received this letter that they've asked me to read today, so I'll begin. Over the past few years, Public Works has been promised a $5-an-hour increase that they have not received, and now that the city does not want to come through... Now, the city does not want to come through on their promise. In 2019, the local took a 0% increase because the city said they did not have the funds to give us our negotiated increase, and after the city got their COVID money, they only gave it to the police and fire pensions and no one else. Without the street department, the city would be paying millions more to get streets paved come winter. The streets would not get plowed to ensure safe traveling for our citizens and police and fire. Without the water and sewer construction crews, we would have to pay someone else thousands to fix main breaks. You would also have to figure out who is going to run sewer lines when they get backed up and don't flow properly. Without the telecommunicators, all the calls would be directed to other agencies, which would take even longer to dispatch our officers and fire department personnel. Without the water treatment crews, there would not be safe drinking water. If there is a fire, no one would be there to turn up the pumps to help support the water supply needed to put out fires. So, pay us what you owe us, because if you don't pay, we don't stay.
Okay, item number five is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature unless there's a member of the council who'd like to have something removed for further discussion. The consent agenda is approving to receive and place on file the board and commission minutes from the Planning Commission, May 8th, June 12th, 2025. The Zoning Board of Appeals, June 5th, 2025. Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, June 24th, July 1st, 2025. Finance and cash and investment reports for June 2025. The Greater Freeport Partnership, July 2025. Building permit, Fire Department and Police Department reports for July 2025. The finance bills payable in the total of $5,658,211.16 and payroll for pay period ending July 26th, 2025, in the total of $685,042.99, and payroll for ending August 8th, 2025, in the total of $671,983.85. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Stacey? Shadle? Sanders? Sellers? Clem? Johnson? Simmons? Oh, I'm sorry. Ann Parker? The motion passes 5 to 2.
Item number six is appointments. Could you please read?
Connie Craft to the ADA Commission, effective immediately through May 31st, 2029.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion? Alderman Stacey?
Why Connie Craft?
She served previously on an old commission that was stood up years ago. She expressed interest, asked if she could be a part, and I had an opening.
She's an outstanding citizen in this city?
Is she what?
Is she an outstanding citizen in this?
She's very involved in... I wouldn't put somebody on that I didn't think was outstanding. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Stacey? Shadle? Sanders? Sellers? Clem? Johnson? Simmons? Still absent. Ann Parker? Motion passes 7 to 0.
Item number seven is the second reading of Ordinance 2025-44. Could you please read for this?
Ordinance amending Chapter 460, Section 460.16, written permits required for overweight vehicles of the City of Freeport's Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just following up, we had our first reading in July. This is our second reading now in August. Staff requests moving forward with some changes to the ordinance for oversized vehicles, so that'd be creating an overweight and oversized permit form, permitting required within city limits, no matter what roads are used within the city. Also adding $150 for individual one-time permits, $1,200 for an annual permit, that would be for individuals licensed within the city, and then, $500 penalty for noncompliance with permitting. Staff recommends moving forward with this ordinance.
Discussion, Alderman Shadle?
I had a conversation with Garrett Miller from Merrick Crain's... The Crane Service. Name's escaping. He brought to my attention that the state fee, the yearly fee, is $1,400, and he felt ours was excessive at $1,200 and was hoping we could get that somewhere down more towards a $500 range.
Any other discussion?
I would just comment, we'll make it whatever the council decides to be. I did a little bit of research on... I did a little bit of research on different types of fees and other communities charged by the overage of weight over the 80,000 pounds. That would be very difficult for us to do. We don't have that kind of employees or tracking time. I tried to, you know, make it a break rather than doing individual permits. There is still time and expense into the city every time these vehicles move. But it's whatever your guys' pleasure is, mine was just a recommendation.
I'd just like to mention we could probably do something like $500. Does that sound reasonable to council? At this time, you know, we don't have anything on the books, so something's better than nothing, so.
Alderman Stacy?
I don't think it's fair to just make up a price here based upon what someone is wanting. If we need to move it to the next meeting and relook at this, then let's all relook at it. But to sit here and change $1,200 to $500 tonight, I don't think that that's right nor fair.
Manager Boyer?
One thing I might want to mention is I've only been contacted by one alderman who is concerned and expressed some interest from a local business that will be operating overweight within the city. And so from that standpoint, we did look at various other options, but $500 would be a good start on any kind of annual permit. And that would also keep some of the overhead lower for operators that are overweight.
Alderman Clem?
Yes, I know in this, you had eliminated certain vehicles. The example that Alderman Shadle used is needless to say, this guy does a lot of work with the cranes, a lot around the area. Needless to say, it's got a place in town, so he'd be using it all the time. Would there be a possibility of putting him into that group with garbage trucks and so on and so forth?
I don't believe so. The cranes he operates are fairly large and completely different than a garbage truck. They're enormous. So I don't know if Darren wants to chime in on some of that or.
I talked to the one business that called, and they typically run over the weight limit. That's the size of crane. They have multiple cranes, but the one that they, I think, use very regularly is significantly overweight. Our roads are permitted between 60,000 and 80,000 pounds, and I think the unit that we discussed was about 125,000. So the permitting process is really to control where these vehicles operate within the city. So for instance, unless we had a crane job at somewhere on Locust Street, I would not permit somebody to go drive a 100,000 pound load down Locust Street because we just replaced it. So the whole idea behind this permitting process is to map the exact routes that they're traveling. It's not just a free pass to do whatever they want, whenever they want. It is actually to map it out to say, okay, we fixed these streets, so please don't operate on these streets as we move through the network and cycle of it, right? And that's, the people that, because we actually have an ordinance. This ordinance is already on the books. So we do have people that already submit for permits all the time, out of town crane carriers and stuff. We just don't have any fees tied to this ordinance. It actually already exists. I reviewed it with the attorney, and it just says the fees will be made up by the Public Works Director at the end of it, and there was no fee schedule. And I didn't feel like it was right to impose a fee schedule that wasn't approved by council.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, I'm listening to the scenario that you got, or the comprehensive conversation that you guys are trying to establish before council. But we have no comprehensive scaling chart for over-the-road driving here in the city. And I think we should establish that. If we don't have one, we should have one, okay?
If you have one, it's 80,000 pounds.
No, what I mean is, we as council need to be able to examine and do an accessibility of those charts to see if we're within the guidelines of scaling prices, fees, and whatever the nine yards is on that matter. So what I am saying is, before we set fees and try to impose these fees based upon coming out of our head, I like to see this in writing. I like to see a chart mapping of the city where trucks can drive and cannot drive. And I like to see that visually. And I think the people of the city would like to see that visually as well. When they see trucks driving in certain areas, that knowing that they have no business in these areas, but not fine for these, for this kind of traveling, I think we need to have a complete overall view of what the chart should look like when it comes to censoring what trucks are doing within the city itself. And I think that's, yeah, I'm gonna hold this thing for a second until I get done here because I may not be able to come back. And I like, and I like for us to get this thing prioritized before we decide to allow this thing to be done. I don't know if there's a time limit on it, or whenever you guys want to implement this program, or whatever the case may be. But if it's not in effect as of now today, then before we do that, let's have all of our tools in place and making sure that council is very aware of what is being done on these matters and not have us listening to something that may happen or may not have happened. And things are changing, so we want something established where, that has some form of foundation that we can go to all together, not only that, even placed on our website, where people can have accessibility to these kinds of things. So that's my recommendation. I think we should follow through on these kinds of things to keep the integrity of the ordinance valuable to the city of Freeport.
Alderman Stacy?
I would just like to make a motion that we move this to the first meeting in September, where we could get clarity for those who need clarity or want clarity. And I don't think it's fair to start adjusting prices. That's why our constituents already feel like we support who we want and who we don't, we don't. This is a prime example of willing to drop from $1,200 to $500 because of one business, which Director Darren Stiegl said is over a thousand-pound truck.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move this ordinance to the next regular scheduled meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor?
Sure.
Can I respond to Mr. Sanders' comment?
Go ahead.
Just for some clarity. So currently, the way the ordinance exists, anybody can drive anywhere they want without any issue, right? And so if you're a truck that's under the legal moving weight, which is 80,000 pounds, they can drive up and down every street in Freeport without any control, and it's not illegal for them to do it. We don't have routes that are cars only or non-truck routes, right? So they can go wherever they want. This is really for the oversized overweight loads to ensure that they're just not cruising down our streets that we're repairing without any control. We have no control mechanism right now. We have an ordinance that can't be enforced because we have no penalty. So we're trying to put some teeth to it. I have done research on this. What I have proposed is what most communities have. The fee can, I don't want to say it's negotiable, but it's whatever you guys feel is fair. I personally, I did not talk to this business, but I talked to other businesses, and the fee that I proposed, they felt was fair, based on other communities and how they move their loads. Currently, the way the state moves vehicles around the city, excuse me, the state of Illinois moves vehicles, they fill out a permit. And in that permit that they supply to the state, it says you have to get permission or permitting from local jurisdictions. We have found many trucks that drive down our residential streets with no permitting process that are way overweight. I'm trying to get control of this because we're investing millions and millions of dollars in the streets that we don't want destroyed. This is just an extension of our street program. I will say that the one person that called in, now, if he's doing an RDA to develop his business in the future, we know where he's going to be at. So when we reconstruct that street, we will make that street of heavier pavement and size to handle those loads day in and day out. That doesn't mean that there shouldn't be a permitting process for it. This is very typical per community. Some places have automated systems. We don't have enough truck traffic to have these automated systems to do the work. So again, just my clarity on it.
Manager Boyer?
The purpose of first and second reading is to allow time for people to have things settle in. I think this was one of the points that was brought up after the first reading was, this seems excessively high, and because we have nothing now, I personally don't see an issue with lowering it and making it $500, and then we'll see how things go in the future. But whether it's $500 and $1,200, it's not going to change the, our ability to repair roads, and that we'll continue to do that. So staff just recommends moving forward with the amended amount.
I made a motion, why are we still talking?
I want to come back to that. That was, that's why I let them say, as department heads, to say what they want to. But we do have a motion on the floor, you are correct.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor, seconded by Alderman Sanders, is to move this on to the next regular scheduled meeting. So if there's any discussion on that motion itself, otherwise, Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
I just have one question.
On that?
Yes, on that. Just wondering if it was the first reading on, well, I wasn't here on the committee as a whole, and that was on 7/14? And so we've had a whole week or so to look over all of this. I do think that just staying at the $1,200, if that's what they brought it the first time, just staying at that and moving forward to keep things moving. But I think if we already looked at it at 7:14, and they talked about it as a committee as a whole, why are we?
You're correct. This is our third meeting of discussion.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So on Alderman Stacy's motion to move this, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on moving it to the next?
May I say something?
Sure.
If we stick at what was given to us, if we stick at what we've looked at for the last three weeks, I would withdraw my motion. But if...
Well, we haven't made an amendment yet. So are you withdrawing your motion then?
No. Are we going to move forward with this as-is?
Someone would have to make a motion to amend, to change.
No, I'm not talking about changing it. I'm talking about leaving it at $1,200 and moving forward.
That's the way it is right now.
As-is.
As-is.
Right, that's what I say.
Alderman Sanders?
That's what I say.
Comment on reestablishing what this is. This sounds like it's being placed in a position of hastiness. That's what it sounds like to me right now at this moment. And I don't like that kind of feeling that I'm getting. I like all the data information that Brian is recommending, what he is stating right now before us. All of this data information and related to this issue should be brought before us so we can see that, well, for three weeks, we have not seen tangible data. I'm looking for tangible data assessment of what we're discussing right now. And I think it requires more than just us having these small discussions here. Council, these type of things needs to be overviewed by a larger agenda far as how are we going to get down to the nitty-gritty of all of the things that we're trying to recommend to the city and suggest for the city. I think there's more variations of data that could be implemented to the council, and it's not done. This is not coming forward. So I'm just giving, I'm just saying I would love for Boyer, Darren, to give us a little bit more information on how we're going to assess all of this and let the people of the city know where the clarity comes in so they can digest what we're trying to do here. And I'm just saying, I don't like us coming to council just talking about something. And I also want to direct my attention to our city clerk as much as I can. Anytime that we are having these meetings, I know she has, I know she brings it out in a format for council to see, not only for council to see or to hear, but she brings it in a format of tangible documents so we can revert back to it, recite back to it, or go back over what it is that we've been discussing. When I see this kind of format that is happening within the city council by the clerk, I prefer us to have that before us so we can go line by line, knowing exactly what was said, how it was said, what was being done and what the citizens of the city of Freeport is listening to. I think it's more, it brings us back to the center, to where all of this came from. Because right now, we have nothing tangible before us. And so I would love, I would like for us to continue that sequence of documents or data before council, before we even start the process of anything on the agenda. And let the council be able to briefly look over the things that we have been discussing through council on a weekly basis so we can keep it refreshed in our mind of what we talked about. Because trying to say that what we've done two weeks ago does not all the time is retain of information that should be there. And we're talking about it, and we're discussing it. So I think the council should be able to revert back to it and refresh their memory on things that has been said over the council chamber. And that's my recommendation. I think that should happen, and let's move forward with that. Because I'm listening to it, but I'm not getting enough data. That's what I'm not getting. We're talking about things that does not have a track record.
Your time has expired, Alderman Sanders.
I didn't know I had a time.
Yes, you have a time limit. Manager Boyer, did you want to respond to that? And then we have to go back to the motion.
I did, just a quick minute. Alderman Sanders, we've talked a couple times on the phone. We've never once discussed this subject, and you've never asked any questions about it.
I am today.
And we have had scheduled times to meet. We've had scheduled times for a minimum of six to eight months, and we not had a time to sit down. So I haven't had the opportunity to discuss those questions with you. So we have an upcoming meeting, and I hope we can get together then.
Okay.
Okay, so back to, there's still a motion on the floor. Alderman Stacy, what do you want to do with that?
Okay, I have a question. So if I pull my motion in hopes that it moves forward as it is, but then someone else make a motion to amend it, that can happen?
Yes, it can.
You know, it's like we respect Darren's opinion on everything. I mean, it's like Fairground runs this city. He have an opinion on everything, and we give him the floor to express and respect his opinion. And so I don't understand why it can't be respected now. So in good faith, that we're going to move forward as we have talked about the last three weeks, as what has been presented, I will remove my motion.
Alderman Sanders, will you remove your second?
I will, I like to do that based upon what our city clerk presents to us from this day forward. She's been doing the job, she's been doing the job. I commend her for that because it does keep us abreast of the meetings that we are doing. That's the, she has the only mechanism in place that keeps us abreast on a weekly basis that I like to see continue. But yes, I do amend it, but the thing is...
No, I'm asking if you'll remove your second.
Oh, yes, I will remove it.
Okay, so now we're back to the original ordinance on the second reading. Is there any discussion? Alderman Clem?
Yes. Darren, this is a question. Understanding the ordinance, basically, do I see two parts of this? One is basically the financial end of it, but the main thing is, if this goes through, basically, then you're going to work with that person on it, whether it be daily or whatever basis, to plan their route of where they're going with their, have you, correct?
Correct. Our process, and I've talked to a couple people on that, is they submit an email with their route. If they're in annual, they submit it with the route, and we approve it if there's no issues with that route. If it's, I keep using Locust Street because everybody knows it. If it would be down Locust Street, I would say no reroute and go down West Street, right? At which we have, with the permit process, we have that opportunity to do that, because we're reviewing their path. You also have to remember, you know, the local people that truck through Freeport all the time, they're moving trucks, you know, five, six days a week. So, there is time and expense and issues to this, and I'm sure a lot of those people would do annual permits. The one-offs are for people that occasionally come through. I don't, I guess I tend to agree with City Manager Boyer that I don't think the amount is as important as the process, right? So, but I'm fine with whatever. I suggested what myself and the Public Works team, what little research we could do, because you have to remember something in a city of Freeport. Whether we're talking about water, or sewer, or roads, the city of Freeport has its own DNA, right? Our costs are different than other towns' costs. Our staff size is different than other staff size. So, what may work for one town won't work for another. That being said, you know, I'm flexible. We're not trying to drive people out of Freeport. We're just trying to make it a, a system that's used and can be monitored and tracked by the Public Works team and the movements through town to eliminate failing roads and issues. That's what it's for.
Alderman Johnson?
So, like you just said, the main purpose of this is try to protect our roads that we've already done, and try not to break down the roads that we haven't been able to get to yet to try to make them so they're at least drivable. Also, you have, you said you've asked other cities, kind of what they, you've done some research, other places, kind of what they charge and that sort of thing?
And again, some of the bigger towns that we have to compare to, they have very sophisticated systems, similar to the state, where it's all automated processes. People get an annual thing, and then they turn in their routes and things like that. And some of them, like Rockford's, if you look at theirs, they pay by the pound. We don't have scale systems, and those would cost an immense amount of money to put scale systems in. So, we actually have the owners figure out their weight on their own and show that to us if they're overweight. Again, I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about this. We're probably talking in the neighborhood of five to 10 trucks a month, honestly, that, that are running overweight, right? Most of them run legal weights, and this does not pertain to them.
Okay.
Alderman Johnson, you want to-
Just two more questions.
Yep.
If we, if we pass it with the amount that we designated at this time, what was it, 1,200 instead of 500? Would there be any time possibly that we could change that if we felt like it was to? I mean, the council could come back together and renegotiate that if we felt like that was a problem. Also, I was wondering, where does the, the money from the permits, what, what does that money go toward when we get, get the money for the permits? Where does that money go?
Sure. So, yes, it could come back to council at any time, just like any other ordinance, and have the cost changed to a lower amount, higher amount, whatever the pleasure of the council. And it just takes City Manager, the mayor, or any council people to bring that back up to the meeting. And then, all of our permit fees, doesn't matter what department it comes through, goes back to the general funds. They're paid in, and finance, I believe, brings them all back through the general fund.
Okay, thank you much.
Alderman Sanders, you've already spoke twice. Is there any other discussion? Alderman Shadle?
I just would like to reiterate that this gentleman mentioned this, because the state fee is 1,400, the city came in at 12. He felt that was exorbitant for what it was, state versus the city. The 500, he felt would have been more appropriate. Another comment on to our city clerk that I think she's doing a fine job. The notices on this agenda, under item seven, says view memo, view state statute, and view permit application, I think was pretty much everything you were saying she didn't have there. It's there.
If there's no further discussion?
Yeah.
Well, you've spoke twice, so I'd have to get council approval.
No, I'm not speaking. I'm just saying, is it, is it prudent that someone makes a derogatory comment to another council sitting right in his ear about something that's not on the agenda? That's what I want to make reference to. And that, and, and just because he made that comment, I think there should be some kind of discretion being presented when a council does that. You know, when he has no, he's not agenda, he's not on agenda. It should not have been implemented in that agenda. That's what I'm getting at, and he put me there.
Alderman Sanders, I, I think you had indicated that you wanted the clerk to do certain things there to give you that information. I think Alderman Shadle was just pointing out the fact that everything that you're asking for is hyperlinked to the agenda by the clerk there. I think that's all he was saying. He was kind of answering your question.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll accept it today. I'll accept that.
Okay, so, is there any other discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacey?
Alderman Simmons?
Manager Boyer, what is the amendment? Does it stand as was-
There is no amendment. It's the way it stands. Unless you want to make an amendment.
We're voting on an amendment.
No. You're voting on an ordinance that, there's no amendment that has gone forward. If you'd like to put an amendment on, that's up to you.
Okay, my bad. Yeah, it says amending. Exactly. That's what I'm saying, the amending of this ordinance that we are voting on.
Okay, Attorney Zito will answer that.
So, the ordinance itself, the ordinance that's been presented at COW and, and first read and now second read, it is an ordinance that is amending the existing ordinance to add a process there. And, and in that ordinance that's amending the current version of the code, it has a fee of $1,200 in it. During tonight's discussion, there were talks about an amendment to the, the underlying ordinance to change it to 500, but there was no motion to actually change the dollar amount, to tweak the ordinance as presented.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
Okay, no, there was no motion, but Manager Boyer agreed to doing it.
No, he can't.
He just said, that's fair. City recommends that. So, as long as that's not being changed.
Correct.
Okay.
It needs the councils, his, Manager Boyer is make, he said that he's fine with it being 500 as a recommendation of his, but it's still up to you guys to decide whether or not you want to make the motion to change, actually implement that $500 change.
That's all I wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you. That it wouldn't be changed once we voted yes.
Madam Clerk, please take the roll on the ordinance as-is.
Stacey?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
Item number eight is the second reading of ordinance 202548. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending Chapter 1252 of the zoning code of the city of Freeport concerning physical cultural centers.
Director Duckman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this ordinance, nothing has changed since the first reading, but there were some questions about number of actual physical cultural centers slash gyms that have come into the area, and how often a subject like this would occur. And in the past year, we've had four actual athletic centers, physical cultural centers, gyms come through the city of Freeport. We've had, on March 3rd, we approved it in council. 18 South Chicago was Magicians Academy MMA, so that was in March 3rd. Then, we also had a new gym who's still working on their build-out, so they haven't given their name yet, but that was at Cub Foods. So, that was July 7th of 25. We just recently had the Studio Alon Pilates Studio at 206 East Stevenson. That was July 21st, 2025. And then, we also had the Freeport Martial Arts at 105107 West Main Street. So, we, those are, and that was called Freeport Martial Arts. That was July 21st, 2025. So, the, that, that gives a little background on why staff has presented this, what's known as a text amendment. We, we brought it to Planning Commission, and we looked at our comprehensive plan, and we stated that we were seeing an influx of what is a positive land use, which is physical activity. There's plenty of complaints that our community doesn't have enough positive activities to do, and we're seeing quite a bit of an influx of these gyms, physical cultural centers, and there's quite a bit of red tape having to take every time somebody wants to open a gym in the business district, they're having to go through to city council. And so, you know, what to consider here is, when your constituents say, and it happens, council members will come up to me and say, why are you putting this business owner through all this red tape to open up a gym or a pilates studio? And, well, the answer is, well, I mean, now's your chance to vote for that. Now, you're considering, does every gym, does every pilates studio, every aerobic studio, or anything in this city, should they go through a special use permit? Or do, or does councils see it as our planning commission sees it, and that this is a use where we, they should be allowed to do it by right? And certainly, anybody in this city is subject to building codes. They would still have to get a certificate of occupancy. They would still have to pass their fire code inspections, et cetera. So, that's really what's before you today.
Thank you. Alderman Sanders?
Yeah. Are you receiving complaints from these business owners?
I would say, I would say nine out of 10 business owners complain on any permit they have to fill out.
Okay, and so, does the, does the permit stipulate exactly what the criteria is for them to meet certain things with inside of this permit? Does that, is that presented with inside of the permit itself?
Every permit states what is requested and what's going to be reviewed, yes.
So, why are we, why are we listening to people that is trying to alter the permit if they don't want to work inside of the guidelines of the permit? Why are we allowing the permit to be altered to be convenient to some and not to others?
That's not true.
That's not true? Well, that's what I'm hearing.
I can explain again.
Well, you may be able to explain that, but what I'm saying is, it's not anything that, if our permit is not stipulating with guidelines that a business owner wants to open up their business and understand that these are the parameters of this permit, and I'm, and I have to meet all of the, all of the things that are within this guideline, why are we having a complaint issue with owners or business prospective owners about the permits?
To answer your question quickly, every business, most business owners would, would prefer not to have to pay for permits, so this costs money. And most business owners would like to be efficient and start opening up their business right away. So, as in general, a general answer to your comment is less regulation. From a business owner's perspective, they're going to want less regulation. From a staff perspective, I brought four physical cultural centers before council this year, and I will gladly do four more, 20 more. This department would, will stand by and bring every single gym, pilates studio to city council. That's what's before you today. This, this measure was brought not for one specific owner, not because people complained. They, it simply was brought because when a land use, when you see an influx of people wanting to start gyms, studios, and you're looking at it and saying, does, does every gym that opens up, it does that warrant having to come to council and delay opening their business every time a gym comes to the city to get their proper permits? And we've seen four people do it in the past year. If that's the, if that's what the pleasure of council is, I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I'm giving-
Mr. Duckman?
Yes.
The permits are self-explanatory.
Sure, and, and we are, and there's no argument.
And the fact that, and the fact that you are, I understand that you have to listen to the business owners and put things like that. I can, if they're, if it's, if it's better to serve them in a particular way, I can understand the alterations in permits if, if it's all agreed upon, especially coming from the council. If, if there's any changes in the permit that satisfy them altogether, I don't want it to be one side and, and the other side. And, and if, and if that's the case, we need to be able to look at it again, have another assessment about it, retalk about it again like we're doing now. And I'm, I'm liking the comments that you're making. I, I don't, I don't like to drive people out of business neither. I want them to be able to be comparable in what they're doing and being able to serve the city of Freeport. And so, when we're doing that, that's all I wanted to do, is bring clarity to, and let the, let the people know, and not only let the council know, but let the citizens of Freeport know that we are looking into these matters with, with, with our eyes open, you know, that kind of thing, so.
I understand.
So, that's all I'm saying.
I, I understand that. Respect that.
Alderman Johnson?
I just have some information, because I know we had a question of what physical culture center means. The definition is a place dedicated to the systematic cultivation of physical fitness and health through various exercises and practices. The concept is rooted in the belief that physical development and health are interconnected with cultural values and contribute to a holistic sense of well-being. And I just went through and hunted how many of these are in the city of Freeport, and what I could find online, there was 22. That includes your martial arts, that includes exercise places, that includes yoga places. So, just to let you know, there are 22 already in the city. Also, I have a question. Is there a place where they can open up these without having to come to the council for rezoning of the, or without having the permit?
There is. It's, there is. It's more restrictive, because anytime you have, right now, it's in the B2, B3, or manufacturing districts. So, anytime when, when you're creating the plan of your city, when you get into, you get into more intense business districts, B2, B3, the city's going to typically have smaller areas where you could have factories or more intense uses, body shops, et cetera. Right now, physical cultural centers are considered by our zoning the same as a body shop, the same as manufacturing. And what we're seeing, what we're seeing is, staff is seeing like, we, we, staff is seeing it, and we think that that's restrictive, and that with an influx of a positive land use, physical activity, working out, it's good for our community. It's, we, we're not seeing it the same as those more intense uses. And they would have to go to those more intense uses and find locations where they could put them to fit there. So, that's really what this is about, is seeing an influx in this use, which staff thinks is, is a positive for the city. We, we're happy that people want to bring physical health to our community. We're just trying to be more business-friendly to say, we shouldn't have to bring these, every single gym that opens up would be bringing it to council for approval.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacey?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Simmons?
No.
Parker?
Aye.
The ordinance passes six to two.
Item number nine is the second reading of ordinance 202549. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending Chapter 1252 of the zoning code of the city of Freeport concerning service of alcoholic liquors.
Director Duckman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, nothing here has changed yet, nothing has changed on this since the first reading. And so, essentially, what this is, is our codified ordinance is state, serve, and not sell alcohol. So, currently, what we're saying is that you would not need to get a special use permit if you are in a BYOB, Bring Your Own Alcohol establishment, because our current ordinances say sell as opposed to serve. So, what this is essentially, this is a cleaning up of the language review by our legal counsel saying that we're, we're trying to be, we're trying to hold our BYOB establishments to the same standard that our, our bars and restaurants in town are. And that's, it's, so, to make sure that they would still have to get a special use permit.
Any additional discussion on this reading? Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, what, can you repeat that again on the last, the last thing that you said about bringing their own BO permit, whatever?
So, we, you know, we've had plenty of discussions over the past year, and meeting halls are typical use where you're going to have a Bring Your Own Alcohol establishment, and you're going to serve it. You're not going to charge a fee. You're not going to go buy a glass of wine or a beer. You're not going to charge a fee. You're not going to go buy a glass of wine or a beer.
Yeah.
And so, all of the liquor licenses are required to have a special use permit first.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's a loophole that currently exists where if you're in a BYOB or you're not charging per drink, they are not, it's a loophole. It's, we're cleaning up the language that says, it says sell alcohol. So since that establishment, the meeting hall's not selling alcohol, they would not have to go get the special use permit. And our attorney did a review of the, our, our code and said, we really should clean this up to make sure that they're on the same playing field, to make it fair.
What you're saying is, at these meeting halls, I'm trying to get the interpretation of where this uh, product can be served. Is it meeting halls or is it in any other establishment type of venue or, or establishment that this BO?
BYOB.
Yeah, and, and, and do, do we have the correct meaning of interpretation of where this can be served? I mean, is that established? Have we established that?
Yes.
Cause we need to be able to make a differentiation of which one is which.
And that's why we're here. That's why this is here. Is that it's been reviewed and anywhere that's serving or selling, either one, they're going to have to be on the same playing field. That's why this is here, to make sure we're, we're, we're fair and we're doing every, treating everyone the same.
Okay, now, now my question also is.
Did you want to use your second time, Alderman?
Yeah, let me do that. Um, uh, these meeting venues or meeting places, as you make reference to, are not always established uh, restaurants, uh, uh, what we call bars or whatever the case is. And people are just out having a uh, convention or an event, or an event. But they're actually, uh, in those type of meetings, alcohol is being served, but they're also being charged. What's the difference between the two? Because if a person wants to bring his own and the venue, a staff already established a, a prop bar for sale, is there a problem there? Would that be?
Yes, there's two different, there's different classes of liquor licenses. And a meeting hall is not supposed, if a meeting hall gets their BYOB liquor license, they are not allowed to sell alcohol.
Okay.
So that's, that takes care of your, your concern. You know, if, as soon as you say, I'm going to sell a drink to you as a bar or restaurant, would, that's a different class of liquor license.
Well, I'm, I'm referring to any venue, meeting hall, that sets up a bar. When a, when a, at a meeting, people want to have something at the bar and they're normally charged.
They should be.
Yeah, and they should have a permit for that. Am I correct?
You are correct, and they do.
Yeah, and that, and how do we determine whether they're eligible to do so?
We have, well, that's part of this, right? We have a liquor commission.
Mm-hmm.
And if somebody wants to sell alcohol, serve alcohol, what, they, they know what they would like to do. They come to city hall. They talk to my department. They talk to Clerk Anderson's department. And then we figure out which licenses they need. Um, when you go, before you go to a liquor commission meeting, which would determine if you meet the requirements for a liquor license, uh, you, you have to go and through a special use permit process, which is through my, through the community development department. And what this is saying is, the language is clearing it up from sell to serve because some establishments don't serve, don't, don't charge for alcohol.
Right, right. Well, my, my point is, there are a lot of them that does.
And they, they're taken care of.
And I like to know whether or not they're receiving permits that allows them to be eligible to do so. Because in that same, in that same sector, a BYOB, whatever that is, I don't know the right term.
Bring your own alcohol.
Might want to be able to walk into an establishment of that nature and bring his own liquor without propping, uh, without notifying the bar, whoever, to find out whether they're, uh, whether the eligibility is okay to uh, bring their own liquor into an establishment that, or an event that they're, that they're in, if there's a bar in place. Which one governs over the whole event, uh, when it comes to sale of liquor or service of liquor?
I just, I'm sorry, I don't understand what, what's.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, would you like to say something?
So when the meeting hall ordinance was rewritten, bars and restaurants that serve alcohol are exempt from getting a meeting hall license. So what would be an example? The bowling alley?
Sure.
If they had a banquet room, we are not going to require them to get a meeting hall license for their banquet room. It was decided that places that sell liquor are pretty heavily regulated and we would not put them through the meeting hall process. So if they are a bar or a restaurant, they're not a meeting hall. If they are a meeting hall, they have the option to have a BYOB. Or, or there can be a meeting hall that doesn't have BYOB.
Yeah.
But if you are bringing your own liquor.
My point is, how do you establish that? How does a, a person not knowing what the establishment permitted, if they don't have a posting notification sign before they enter into any event, venue, or banquet, or whatever the case is? If there's no sign posted saying that this is not a BYOB, whatever, uh, establishment, we are a bar, we are, we are permit to sale. And that's what you get at these establishments. And that, and you have to be able to distinguish the difference. When a, when a, when a person come off the street and want to attend this event, they need to know.
Okay.
Whether they can.
So Alderman Sanders, you've actually spoken like four times now.
Oh, have I?
Yeah, so if you.
Well, I just wanted to bring that. I just needed clarity on that. That's all I wanted.
Well, I mean, yeah, and I, rest assured that uh, it's a process. We have a liquor commission meeting. And um, anybody who's serving or selling alcohol is regulated through our department and whatever concerns you have. I mean, you know, certainly, if there's ever a major concern, the next time there's a liquor commission meeting, I would suggest going. Cause they will talk about, you know, they talk about all that at the liquor commission.
Very good, very good. That's all I was looking.
Understood, understood.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion on this text amendment, um, would you please take the vote?
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
No.
And Parker?
Aye.
The ordinance passes seven to one.
Item number 10 is the second reading of ordinance 202550. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving special use permit application at 2600 West Pearl City Road, submitted by Harmony UMC to examine the special use of an R3, one-family residence zone property to allow for solar energy systems which utilize ground-mounted PV arrays per section 1250.01B20.
Alderman Shadle, or who wanted to present this? Director Duckman, is it you?
I can see, I was.
Um, I guess I would just bring it, um, I'll speak on behalf of this. So essentially, this uh, was brought originally to council on July 21st. And uh, it didn't, it essentially was brought to the floor and there was no motion made on it uh, for a vote or discussion at all. It was just brought and there was never a motion or a second to discuss it. So uh, what we're talking about here, um, it's been brought again to council. And essentially what we have here uh, is Pearl, this is the church here. And you can see, these are the existing panels on a shed roof, which is allowed by rights. They don't have to um, go to council to ask for permission here. But they're asking for 120 feet here, or I'm sorry, it's 120 feet from the property line here, which is uh, you have a natural barrier of trees and you have the building line here. And you can see that the solar panels were back further uh, away from the view screen from the road here. Um, so essentially, uh, this is Pearl City Road here. As you come down, originally the developer or the church and State Line Solar were discussing filling this entire area with solar panels, as well as this entire area with solar panels. Uh, it's a lot of, a lot of electricity there. Um, they now are down to this small area right in here. So um, it's been brought again on the floor, um, and it's up for approval.
Any discussion? Alderman Johnson?
So this will not be seen from Pearl City Road, right? It's pretty well hidden.
I would say you'd really have to look for it. You know what I mean? You see where, like, if you're coming down here, you'd have to like, you might get a shot of it right through there. But you'd really have to be, you know what I mean? You'd have to be looking for it because you're going by here so fast. And then from the other direction, if your eyes are focused, I don't think you would see it going eastbound.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Sanders?
They're, they're not asking for major changes there in that area.
In my opinion, my opinion is no. You can see, these are the changes. See that little section of solar panels right there? That's what they're asking for.
Yeah, so, so, so that's not an eyesore or anything.
Not in my opinion.
Okay.
There's no further discussion. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy? Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? And Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes five, six, 611. Thank you.
Item number 11 is the first reading of ordinance 202551. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending part four, traffic code title eight, parking, chapter 480, parking generally, section 480.24, disabled persons and veterans of the codified ordinances of the city of Freeport at 304 to 310 West Garfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, the tenant at 304 through 310 West Garfield contacted the city requesting an accessible parking space. Uh, the actual property doesn't have a driveway and they have on-street parking only in that location. The neighbors generally park along the street edge and block the only accessible sidewalk there is, walkway to the residents. And uh, staff has inspected and is making the recommendation that we move forward with adding a parking restriction, um, which includes the, you know, the disabled parking spot on, on Garfield. So um, also staff is requesting suspension of the rules so we can move forward with this.
Is there a motion to move this forward?
So move.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle to move this ordinance forward. Alderman Shadle?
Yes, I, the only question I have, I, I'd be all for this. Uh, we need to take care of people that need that. Um, the only question I have is, in, in our ordinances, is there any stipulations that as these people, if they would move? Or if they would, I guess ultimately not be disabled anymore? Is there any provisions for them to contact us so that we can move this back into a normal parking space if it's no longer needed?
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. I'm not aware of any, but maybe the clerk has.
I don't think they know.
I, I'm not aware of any requirement for them to notify the city that they've moved.
Maybe we should think about that.
Yeah, understood.
Alderman Stacy?
Is this, is this something that would be considered no matter where you lived in the city? Do everybody have this right?
Well, if you, if you're mobility challenged, I think we got to do our due diligence to ensure that we can do this for them. Because, I mean, there are a lot of people here in town that we've done this for. As long as it doesn't.
Doesn't have a driveway, correct?
This person does not have a driveway.
Okay, but I'm just saying, would this apply to everyone that had mobility problems that lived in this city, regardless of where they lived?
Uh, well, so far, we, we have not had very many requests. And of the ones that we've had, we've granted.
Yeah, I.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, I, I'm very aware of that. And uh, the fact that uh, it's been done expeditiously, considered. I think like, like uh, the recommendation for all citizens in the city of Freeport that has in mobility to manage uh, their ex, their exiting, their entry and exit, uh, to be efficient enough for them to get in and out of their property. And I, and I like the fact that uh, Alderman Shadle brought up the fact that if, if there's any changes in their status, uh, will it go back to normal status of, of that property or that, that particular area? I like that. I think that should be something that we should continue, continue to look at and to continue to consider. And I think it should be applied to all uh, people in that condition, in that situation.
Alderman Clem?
I have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle for suspension of the rules. Suspension of the rules is non-debatable. It must pass by two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, could you please take the vote on the suspension only?
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes eight to zero.
And before you counsel, is the final passage for this ordinance, is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
And the ordinance passes eight to zero as well.
And item number 12 is the first reading of ordinance 202552. Could you please read this?
Ordinance authorizing the sale, recycling, donation, and/or disposal of certain personal property owned by the city, uh, police department abandoned personal property and bicycles and an old chair in my office.
Police department?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the background is the Freeport Police Department is currently in need of disposing property at the Freeport City Yards, 1001 North Island Avenue, and auction off abandoned property being held by evidence and property. Discussion, there are abandoned bikes that have been in the possession of the Freeport Police Department for at least six months, being stored at the Freeport City Yards. There are also items being held by evidence and property that can be considered abandoned property. These items have been in the custody of the police department for at least six months. The owners of the items have been notified to pick up the property. However, the owners have been unresponsive. The Freeport Police Department would like to use propertyroom.com to auction off abandoned property. Any proceeds earned would go to the City of Freeport General Fund. Additionally, the clerk has one office chair uh, that can be added to the disposal list. Funding, there is no funding necessary. Request, staff is requesting to recycle the bicycles, dispose of the clerk's chair, and auction off the abandoned property. Strategic plan alignment for responsive and efficient government.
Is there a motion to move this forward?
So move.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Clem. Discussion on this ordinance?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Shadle? I'm sorry, Alderman Sanders, forgive me.
I was going to ask you if you want to wear a pair of these here.
Just got to turn my hearing aids up.
Oh, okay. Well, I wa, I wanted to ask, um, is this, is this the notification that went out to the community? Uh, that you guys are going to uh, do this disposal or auctioning and things of that nature? Where they can uh, get more data, information about, uh, if they want to come, take a look to see if they want to uh, take an opportunity uh, to look at items that could be sold or things that needs to be disposed. And I, and I just wanted to make sure that uh, we are, our, our community is well-informed about this. And this is not going to, and, and, and not only that, whatever the proceeds are that is generated from that, I think we should let the community know exactly what we've uh, received from those donations or those, that sale, those sales that we're making. Is that, is that okay with you?
So to answer your question, this is the notification um, that we're doing. Uh, if anybody in the community would like the opportunity to bid on those items, they are on, or will be on propertyroom.com. Propertyroom.com, when items sell, they then um, provide record of what it was sold for, what the amount was. And then that, those funds go back to the city.
Okay.
Period, so.
Yeah, that's all I, that's, I think.
Any further discussion? Alderman Parker?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Clem for suspension of the rules.
Before we do a suspension of the rules, Mayor.
That's what's on the motion right now.
Yeah, I know the motion has been made, but are we done having a discussion before?
We can come back to it if you want.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at because.
So a suspension of the rules uh, must pass by two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the suspension only?
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? Sint and Parker?
Aye.
The suspension passes seven to zero.
Okay, so now before you, is the second reading. So um, So, um, Alderman Sanders, did you have another question?
You know, Mayor, when I get interrupted like that.
Well, there was a motion on the floor, so if you wanna come back to you, we can. Any, any other?
I just, I, I.
Discussion?
You make me lose my train of thought because I had much to talk about. But anyway. Anybody else?
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
And Parker.
Aye.
The ordinance passes seven to zero.
Item number 13 is the adoption of resolution 2025-86. Could you please read this?
Resolution authorizing execution and amendment of Downstate Operating Assistance Program or DOP grant agreement for fiscal year 2026.
Director Duckman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, what is before you right now is, um, a resolution for an agreement to, with the Illinois Department of Transportation, uh, to accept the $2.1 million in funding for the operation of the Pretzel City Area Transit Program. So, um, we, I've looked through the, uh, proposed budget. It's been approved, um, with, through the Illinois Department of Transportation and staff is recommending, uh, approval of this resolution.
Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Sanders.
Um, the grant. How is that prioritized throughout the city? And, uh, who's receiving this grant? And, um, and how it's gonna be beneficial to the constituents of the city where, where when it's, when, when everyone should have, uh, the opportunity to utilize, to utilize all of the services of this grant opportunity? I just don't want it to be a, a targeted type of grant for any particular department, entity, or whatever the case may be. I wanna know how we prioritizing all of these kinds of things.
Okay, so this.
City manager, would you like to address that, please?
Yes, I would. Alderman Sanders, I just wanted to reassure you, this is Pretzel City Transit. Everybody has access to it and that is what this is for.
Well, you may make a short statement like that, but that's not what I heard last week, okay?
Okay, so are you asking for your second round of?
Well, no, he's, he's making a statement toward me. He making a comment toward me. Um, it's not me using my cu, my time.
Okay, then, then I haven't given you the floor.
I'm answering him.
So I'm asking you, would you like to have your second time?
Why would I wanna do that when I'm answering?
Then I will move on.
You can't do that, Mayor, because I am answering him.
He didn't ask you a question.
Far as I'm concerned, he's making a comment that is making a reference to what I'm talking about already. And my point of the matter is, if he's gonna say stuff like that, I should be able to rebut it. That's all I'm saying. I should be able to rebut what he is saying without using my own question.
Okay, so you've, you're, you're using your second turn, so is there?
I'm not using a second turn.
Okay, then we're gonna move on. Do we have anything else on this?
You know what?
Alderman Stacy.
Explain to me what this grant agreement consists of. Who weeps the benefits from it? And what does it do for our city?
Sure, uh, the short answer, very, you know, to not complicate things, but I'll get complicated later, the short answer is if we do not enter this agreement, Pretzel City Area Transit does not exist. So, we need this agreement to fund the Pretzel City Area Transit for $2.1 million. So, if we don't, it, I mean, it's, I, I can't say it any more plain than that. Uh, it's very simple. If we don't approve this, Pretzel City Area Transit will not exist. Pretzel City Area Transit exists because of this grant.
Right.
That money goes to nowhere else, um.
So we've gotten this grant before?
Always.
And all of this $2.1 million goes to Pretzel City?
Yes.
And that's how they've been able to exist all this time in Freeport?
That is correct. That is 100% correct.
Okay, so why wouldn't the memo say that?
I, I'm, I'll, I can read the.
Make it simple, make it plain.
It says.
We need this for Pretzel City to exist. Without it, there is none.
I thought it was clear in the memo, but I can say it more, I said it more plain now. I can certainly make it more plain next time, next round.
I like to make us.
Okay, Alderman Sanders, would you like your second time?
Um, yeah. I hope what I said earlier was not ignored, okay? Because of the fact that I asked the priorities of entities that are gonna be utilizing this grant. That's, that's what I did bring to the floor. I wanted to make sure that we had clarity that who, who, what entity in this city is using that particular grant, not just the Pretzel City, but whether or not any other departments or whatever that's throughout the city gonna be utilizing this grant. That's the part that I wanna stay focused on. Don't, don't discard that or dismiss it like I didn't even mention it. I would like to know if there's any other establishment or department here, so whatever department are gonna be using this grant. And I hear Pretzel City, I understand that, but the, uh, the breakdown of this grant, is it just for the Pretzel City or any other governing body?
The only, this grant stands for DOAP, stands for Downstate Operating Assistance Program. And that grant is specific for rural communities, which we are, per the grant guidelines, and it's for transport, public transportation. So that is the only, this grant money is only used for Pretzel City Transit. That's all it can be used for and we apply for it every year.
But, but what we're saying is this.
You don't have the floor. I'm sorry, you don't have the floor.
You're quick.
Um, Alderman Shadle?
Yes, um, I failed to print that memo. Would you care to read that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, sure. Pretzel City Area Transit provides on-demand transportation services within Freeport and Stevenson County. Funding to provide transportation services are obtained through annual applications under the State of Illinois 5311 and Downstate Operating Assistance Program grants. So, to your point, older person Stacy, that's where I had said, um, it's, it does not exist without this grant assistance. Then I go on to discussion and I say, as part of our annual transportation grant application to the State of Illinois, under the 5311 Transportation Program and Downstate Operating Assistance Program, the City of Freeport is required to have council approve the following. One, an ordinance adopting transportation services within Freeport and Stevenson County. Two, a resolution authorizing an application to be made to the Office of Intermodal Project Implementation, Department of Transportation, State of Illinois, for a financial assistance grant under Section 5311 for fiscal year 2026 for the purchase of offsetting a portion of the public transportation program operating deficits to the City of Freeport. Three, a resolution accepting, uh, that the City of Freeport is participating in said operating assistance programs will provide local and matching funds once application is approved. That is, um, what we're, that is what you are on right now. Items one through two were approved prior to the submission of the transportation grant applications. Resolution authorizing the execution of the Downstate Operating Assistance Program grant is now presented to accept and enter into the grant agreement. And the recommendation is staff recommends approval of the resolution in order to move forward with the grant agreement.
Thank you.
Alderman Shadle, did you have more?
I just would like to say that I, that was in the memo hyperlink by our city clerk.
Mayor, I, I.
You've already spoke twice.
Yeah, but you didn't ask me if I had more. You did not ask.
Well, that's because you just interrupt all the time.
Yeah, well, never.
Alderman Stacy, did you have something?
You can't say that. My point is, when I'm, when I was on the floor.
Alderman Sanders, will you please wait until you are called on?
Yeah, but you didn't ask me if I had more to say.
You're being disruptive. Please don't make me call you out of order. Alderman Stacy, did you have something? Is there any other discussion on this particular resolution? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Simmons. And Parker.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Item number 14 is adoption of resolution 2025-87. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving an agreement with Fairgram to provide construction engineering services for Walnut Avenue Lift Station.
Manager Boyer.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just, uh, to touch on Walnut Street Lift Station, the idea is would the lift station we put are near the corner of Lamb Road and Walnut Road. The purpose of the lift station is to convey waste under pressure from that location to the interceptor on the other side of the bridge on Walnut Road to the north side. The reason this is necessary is because we currently have industry in that area that utilize a very old part of lateral that connects to the interceptor that if ever failed, it would be very challenging to work on due to its depth of over 20 feet and its proximity to the landfill. Therefore, that is one aspect. The other aspect is there's additional development that needs to be done there. Um, there's empty lots that need to be brought online and when we add additional demand on the system, uh, we will be, uh, challenged to convey that waste to the interceptor. And lastly, as we build the Well 12, uh, project on Forest Road, uh, designs are including the Walnut Street Lift Station as a way to, uh, convey the waste from that area of Lamb, of Walnut and Lamb, uh, to the interceptor. So, uh, with that being said, we need to have a construction, uh, construction over, um, supervision contract so that we can make sure that the lift station is built appropriately and correctly. So Fairgram has designed and bid the sanitary sewer lift station, force main piping and gravity piping improvements on the Lamb Road area sanitary sewer flow. The sewer system on Lamb Road District carries a significant flow to the city interceptor on a daily basis and a public bid was opened and was held on Tuesday, July 22nd at 10:30 in the morning. I might also add that our largest water customer uses this section of lateral every day to dispose of the waste for the processing of food. This is very important because they go through a lot of water and their contribution to our utility is what helps keep our utility rates at a reasonable level. The Fairgram Scope Service will provide, uh, professional, full-time, onsite construction engineering and observation as well as a contract management services for the City of Freeport. Fairgram shall additionally provide GIS survey, uh, collection, staking layout for the sewer piping, roadway boring, and road improvements. Construction observation will include materials, shop drawings, field construction engineering, uh, required documentation, um, specification adherence, and the required QA QC methods. Uh, Fairgram will ensure the pro, uh, project is built in accordance with the city, state, and county standards, along with filling all required documentation in accordance with IEP A water pollution policies. Uh, Buy America, Build America certification and material compliance will be tracked to infrastructure requirements, geotactical testing services for aggregate density, and hot-mix asphalt QA QC testing will be provided by Fairgram through a third-party professional geotech agency as required. The city plans to fund the $224,250 construction engineering contract through the Lamb Road TIF. Staff recommends moving forward with the contract with Fairgram.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Sellers.
Um, could you also explain, um, the, what TIF, the money for TIF out there at the Lamb Road can only be used for?
Economic development.
Operations out there.
Yes, the TIF money is for economic development and this is necessary infrastructure as we move forward with additional economic development.
Sure.
Um, so you also, the TIF money cannot, um, go to any, um, any of the city, citizens or anything. The money has to go to redevelopment of that area, correct?
Yeah, in line with TIF, um, the use of TIF funds, that can be used for, um, economic development incentives. It can be used for infrastructure improvements, but things that are related to the Lamb Road TIF in, in the form of economic development.
Alderman Sanders.
Yeah, I, I've been, um, been studying this whole process. And, um, far as I am concerned, we don't have the historical fact of that development area. I'm talking about council. I'm directing this information and things like that to council since we're the ones that are voting to, uh, to move forward on this, on these matters. And I don't hear no one speaking out on the, the real, uh, issues that are being considered here and we have not evaluated. And I feel that we are being incompetent, not looking into these matters because obviously we, that's the reason why I always want the clerk from this point on to, to submit to council what we discussed previously. And the fact that we're not hearing what they're talking about, we're just being passive at this point of not really getting down to the real, uh, point of the matter, whether or not we should be moving forward, whether or not, uh, uh, we're not addressing the historical facts about that whole, uh, area, that whole development area and why it's there and is it causing the city any complication that crease, that creates, uh, the taxpayers, uh, to have to fund this particular, these particular ma, matters. Uh, we have not discussed how much material stuff that's gonna be involved, how much it's gonna cost. We have not talked about, uh, who's running the project. Uh, we know that we have engineers who's doing a survey of it, but my point is who's, who's in charge of the project? And so we have not established our own, uh, understanding of what's going on out there because we have no clue to why these things are put in place or trying to, trying to implement these things and to put them in place. Is it necessary? Absolutely, if it's necessary, I can understand it. I understand what Brad Boyer was talking about. Future development. This thing has been in place for over 30, 40 years. There has not been a disruption. There has not been any complication. I don't even know if they're still doing monitoring, which I know that the city used to monitor those areas and then not only that, go into those areas of, of the septors and, uh, the sanitary and all these. They usually monitor these things and there should be reports, data on who's keeping, uh, uh, this, this type of material before the people of the City of Freeport. I know these things are in place, but are we, are we getting the, the right proper information at this current time to establish why we should put a lift station that's only gonna serve probably one or two entities? And then not only that, not to talk about the capacity of the flow that's supposed to be pushing through these force mains or through these, uh, lift stations? We're not talking about that. Is it necessary? If we're not talking about that, then why are we setting up a lift station that we have no understanding of why we need this because of lack of capacity or lack of industries that have not utilized this area? So, to put a lift station in at this current time does not y, uh, have us in a position where, uh, we should be voting for something to move forward on this until we have done an assessment, evaluation to understand the whole historical point of it all.
Thank you, Alderman Stacy, your four minutes is up.
Did I?
Four minutes?
Yep, your four minutes is up.
Okay.
Alderman Shadle?
Yes, this, uh,
Yes, this is all coming about because when Snack King does their washout, this does run at virtual capacity. That's why we're here.
No, that is not why we're here.
And.
Please stop lying. Stop lying.
I would, at this point, as the fact of the matter, I was been called a liar sitting on the floor. I would like to ask Manager Boyer or Mr. Stekel to clarify my statement, please.
I think what you're talking about, Greg, is the, the fact that we have a human dependent process at Snack King. And if that human dependent failed at any time, that would complicate things substantially there at the corner of Lamb and Walnut Road, right near an important facility on the county nursing home. So in addition to the benefits of having the proper capacity for our existing industry, having the availability for the build out of future industry, and also the conveyance of wastewater backwash from the new well 12, and then the potential for build out along Forest Road, I mean, these are all the reasons that this is an important project.
Alderman Parker? Um, we already have it. Alderman Stacy?
I need some real numbers. Not a portion. Because truth be told, the 234,000 is engineering fees only. Am I correct? There is 11 other processes that have to be completed. And they're not little things, they're big things. So we can approve this 234,000, but to have this project completed in full with all these things that's not mentioned, that's not talked about to the public, the traffic studies, the permit fees, the utility locates, the restaking, all of it. What are we looking at? Cost wise to have this done? Because up to this point, Snack King is still functioning. We haven't had no issues. There's no government, nothing that we're violating. So do we need this now? Can we afford this now? No, we cannot.
Darren, did you want to address those questions?
Certainly. So with every contract, there's always exclusions that are put on there for unforeseen. But realistically, this project should come in at this amount with our fees or even under. We have lots of projects where we get a fee here and we end up coming in under and not charging the whole amount. So we put those exclusions in, we wrote a scope that we think will complete the entire project, but we always have to put exclusions because I can't put those items in on everything without charging more, every contract without charging more money. We don't need a traffic study. We, we don't do restaking. We only stake one time and then the contractor's responsible for it the second time. So those are expenses that don't come back to the city, but we have to clarify that in a contract so we know where we stand and we know what the city's paying for.
Okay, so shouldn't we put on the side, not needed? Do not apply?
That's, that's what an exclusion is. It's assume that it's not needed.
Assuming it's not needed.
Correct. Well, you have to make assumptions. We're working underground. So I can tell you right now, we don't need a traffic study. We already met with the county. The county owns the road. They're not asking for a traffic, traffic study. So that won't be one that's applied. Staking, restaking, we always exclude that because the city's not going to pay for it twice. We pay for it once, and then if it has to be restaked, it's on the contractor to pay for it the second time. So we put exclusions in there to protect the city, not to provide other costs. And I mean, I, you can ask anybody involved with the city. We, we typically never come back for additional costs. We try to write good scopes that include everything from the get-go. So I can tell you that the amount that we put here should complete the construction.
The 234,000 should complete this whole project.
Yes, it's already been designed and bid. This is the construction resident engineering services. This is the quality assurance, the construction part of getting the station built and getting all the piping in the ground for an active running station.
And all this money is coming from the Lamb Road TIF.
Okay, so let me remind you, when the, the back and forth, so if you have several questions, you should ask them all at once.
That is correct.
And there's no debt on that TIF? Is there a debt on the Lamb Road TIF? Is there an existing debt?
I can't answer that.
I believe there's no debt, I know there's no debt. It's 2.3 million is what you're having to pay for it. So there's actually money in the, in the bank. There's no debt service that I'm aware of on that. I mean.
I actually think it's closer to three million. Alderman Shadle, did you have?
I, I did, please. Manager Boyer mentioned the future expansion. This new well that we're putting out, well 12, there's going to be sewer added, water added out. This is the opportunity that we've been looking for, for quite some time to have shovel-ready land for development. One of the main reasons we haven't seen a new factory in this town is we don't have a place shovel-ready to put it. We can put the sewer pipes in, we can put the water pipes in, but if we don't have this lift station, there's not enough capacity in the existing to handle the future development. That's why we need this.
Yes, that's called forward thinking. Alderman Sanders.
Yeah, well, Alderman Shadle was making these, these comments about something that has not had a survey to them, first of all. And he does not, he does not have a, what we call a prediction pend, pendant, a pendle or crystal ball. He don't have any of those things before him. And the city is not just going to have items sitting out in the field for God knows for how long, waiting for a manufacturer to show up to make a development or whatever the case is, that the council don't have no clue about any kind of manufacturing even being considered. And so my thing is, we're dumping money into a ground and then we're going to wait while the taxpayers are suffering from all angles of this city, needing all kinds of grant program fundings and things of this nature. We just got done listening to a part of our constituents here in the city complaining about other, other items that has not been looked at, looked at. So I think what we have not done was looked at the whole scope of the matter, whether or not we're using the money considered here to put on these projects for future, for future advancements. And, and I don't think that should be something that we should be doing at this time if it's not, if it's not an emergency need, if it's not anything that, that is going to help the city currently, right now kind of project, then there shouldn't be shovel readies, readies to come in unless we have prospective prospects that are considering moving to this city. And then we would make those alterations or those changes as necessary and as needed. But, but before then, the funds should not go anywhere until these things are absolutely needed. That's my opinion on that, and, and I think that's how we should move forward.
Darren, did you want to add to?
Yes, so you're entitled to your opinion, but I would like to give you some facts. So this station wouldn't be in reserve. It would be put into operation the day it was constructed because the waste from all of the Lamb Road TIF district would be going into that as soon as it was built because we have the need now. The line, the capacity of that line is at max capacity. We've even had to go to Snack King and ask them to throttle down their flow so we can effectively, effectively serve that entire district. I would like to put another question out there. I've heard numerous times mentioned in the last two weeks, because we talked about this at the Cow, this station is not built for Mill Race. Mill Race will never be an opportunity. It was a once, a once in a lifetime deal with the county money. The county's expended all of their money. There is no way the city of Freeport nor the county can effectively cost to run out to Mill Race. It would require two or three more lift stations to even get that far. So that project's never going to happen in our lifetimes unless somebody comes and gives us a massive gift of free money. The station is truly to service the Lamb Road District area and probably some development, probably from Bayleyville Road and then maybe on Forest Road. That is what this station will serve. The city of Freeport currently has nine lift stations in service that we, we service flow from all different areas of the town because of our elevations. This is adding another lift station to our capacity. We do and have talked for years, since I've been around here, about having shovel-ready sites that we currently don't have. If we don't want to have shovel-ready sites, we don't want any expansion, then we should just fold up because we're not going to get more business here. We don't have ground available for somebody to build that we can put the waste into, and if we don't have that ready, no one's going to come here. They're not going to wait for us to say, hey, we can construct this in a year and a half if you come. That's not, that's not the way shovel-ready sites work. And so those are just facts. Everybody's entitled to their own opinion, but the facts are that the TIF money is for the Mill Race, excuse me, talking too many, the, the TIF money is for the Lamb Road District. They created this. This lift station is to service that area that they created the money from. And so that's why it's an eligible expense. If we were trying to put this in for a project at Mill Race or at the airport or something, the, the funds would be ineligible. We just created the station big enough to handle expansion in the future, which is just good planning. That is all it is.
If there's no further discussion?
Yeah.
You've already spoken twice. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
You don't have to cut me off so, so, you didn't have to cut me off like that. I don't, I don't agree with what you just did.
Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes five to three.
Item number 15 is the adoption of Resolution 202588. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving acceptance of a grant, grant from the Illinois Department of Transportation Aviation Fuel Tax Program.
Thank you, Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city's received the aviation fuel tax grant from the Illinois Department of Transportation for the past three years. The grant does not require a match, and the grant funds are to be used by local governments for airport-related purposes. In the case of the city of Freeport, we have utilized the funds as reimbursement of expanded airport management expenses. There's a small table in the memo for your, for your review. The city of Freeport has received a notice of grant award for the 2025, 2024 Aviation Fuel Tax Grant in the amount of $49,000, 078 and 77 cents. There is not a requirement for the match, and once approved by the city council, the city will submit invoices and proof of payment of airport management expenses in order to receive the grant. Upon review and approval of this, of the invoices submitted to IDOT, allocations will be distributed to the city of Freeport, and staff request approval of the resolution moving forward with the fiscal year 2024 Aviation Fuel Tax Grant.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
A motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Stacy?
What is the match? You keep saying there's a match. What is the match?
Zero.
You said there is no match?
That's correct.
But when you were speaking and was reading, you said match.
Gotcha. It is in the memo, it is written, and I said it in the same way I read it from the memo, so there is no match.
Was that being smart?
Any further discussion?
What the hell?
Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Stacy? I'm sorry, did I miss your vote?
No, I didn't see anything yet.
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Item number 16 is the adoption of Resolution 202590. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving redevelopment agreement with Kendall and Grace at 712 West South Street.
Thank you, Director Duckman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So what we have before you currently is a redevelopment agreement. The name of the company is Kendall and Grace, but this is Wit Plastics, right behind Aldi. To kind of give you a little background of where they're actually located. And their proposed project is a almost 5,000 square foot warehouse facility. There's also going to be some paving, and they're proposing a project that would total $150,000. If we scroll down a little bit, or see if I could do it, this is a image of the proposed project that they have here. So staff has reviewed this proposed development and sees that it is eligible for TIF financing. And it's, in particular, it's within the Meadows TIF District. And what staff is proposing is in line with our other redevelopment agreements. Upon completion of this project, staff would provide a $5,000, would reimburse the developer $5,000. And upon the lifetime of the TIF District, which sunsets in 2037, they would be eligible for the TIF increment they produce. So once this structure is built, it's assumed, and it's reasonable to assume that their taxes are going to increase, and they would receive 75% of that increase in taxes over until 2037. There's a cap on how much money they can get, and that would be $50,000, and this is typical for the lifetime of a redevelopment agreement. What the reason you have these caps is some developments will drastically increase the taxes on a parcel, and staff doesn't, or the city does not want a developer to receive a windfall of an economic development incentive. So it's capped to say that it, they will never, you know, if the taxes increased astronomically from this development, they would be capped for a lifetime of $50,000. So this is a great opportunity for our community, a longtime developer, and staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
A motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Parker. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Johnson?
I have about three questions here.
Yeah.
Where exactly on the property there, as you're showing it there, is that building going to be placed?
Back in.
Do you have more than one question you want?
Yeah, I have three.
Okay, go ahead.
And how do they get in and out of that building? Will it be the driveway that's used to get in and out of Aldi's? Or how will they enter and exit from that building? And the third one is what is the benefit to the city?
Sure.
By them having this building?
Several, okay, I'll, I'll try to answer them in sequence. The location's going to be, this is Aldi down, down here, the guardrail. You can see the guardrail there, that's your Aldi. And then there's the drive behind Aldi that's going to take you up here. And they own, so you come in, you turn right, and then this would be your view right here. And then this parcel here is where they're going to be putting this facility, this 5,000 square foot storage facility. A couple of different, and you're going to say, well, how are they going to get there? Well, they've, they've agreed to pave this area in here, so they won't be dragging gravel in and out of our city streets. So they've already agreed to pave this area. So that's how they're going to be accessing it. And then obviously, they would be coming back out onto this road and then heading towards South Street. Benefit to the city, several economic development benefits here. I've talked with the owners, they're lovely, delightful people. They're building and expanding, and they're running out of room. One of the biggest complaints as all their people, as a community development director you're going to receive is businesses leave, and then they say, well, what did you do? Well, if you were presented a redevelopment agreement and you said absolutely not, the answer is you did nothing. This business has come to the city and said, we need help, we need to expand our business. They potentially, and if the city's not working with them, if they go somewhere else, somewhere else might say, we got a better deal than the city. Leave this for the city to figure out what to do with, come to our community. We've got a better deal. So this is the city working to keep its business in the city of Freeport. That's one. Number two, the business owners have told me that to, they're also looking to add a few employees to also help this. They're, they're getting, they're getting bus, they're, they're just, they need more room, they need more space. It's going to also help potentially add jobs, not just directly for the plastic, Wit Plastics, but also, you know, the company that's going to end up building this is going, you're going to have construction jobs back into the economy as well. So that's something to keep in mind anytime a redevelopment agreement comes up, when your constituents say to you, why are businesses leaving? What are you doing? And the answer is, well, you have a choice to vote to help people expand and keep their business in the community. So that's my answer to that question.
Alderman Sellers?
I would just like to know, I know that you said they're going to be coming in and out of South. Already, right there by Aldi's, it's a lot of congestion.
Yes.
You know, just getting in and out. How are they going to make that, you know, easier? Because I've seen even some people driving, trying to come out of Aldi's because it's such a tight turn. They have went over the cliff a couple of times. They have went over the cliff a couple of times. So how can we make that wide enough where it won't be?
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it won't be so much congestion there with this business coming in and out of there also.
Well, I, we can't change the congestion. We know that Aldi is a very successful business, they're going to have many people coming in and out. So this development is not going to, you know, this is not going to be able to change the traffic. The only thing that it can do is add some paving to the area and it could help them add more storage for their facility. They've stated that they want to stay here. They want to stay in Freeport, they want to expand at their location and they're looking for the city to partner with them. But I'm not going to sit here and tell you that this is going to aid in the, you know, the traffic issues we have at Aldi. It's, you know, this, this development is not going to be able to do that.
Alderman Sanders, did you have?
Yeah. First of all, I don't like the fact that when you are addressing council that someone is expressing their sentiments about how we're proceeding on any measures and talking about, on anything, because I can hear by the conversation that you had with her, she had a complaint. It was, it was subtle, but it was a complaint on, on top of it. Now, working with the city is one thing. We can talk about, we can talk about the possibilities and whether or not the city wants to look into these matters, but we don't even know what type of business, we don't even know what the purpose of it is all about. We don't have no objection for anyone trying to bring in a business, but to, to make it a business that sounds like it's putting us under pressure to make something happen because that's your sentiment that I feel that you're presenting to us right now this, at this time. It's their, it's their conversation with you and you're expressing it here at the council. And I, and I reject all of that, but I like to just be able to talk to a person so we can come to a conclusion or resolution where, where the, where we can move further down the road. But I don't like the expression that you're presenting to council when these folks are, when anyone is talking to you about what we should be doing, that kind of thing. And what, no, 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 I'm still talking. And the fact that we are, are not listening or we have not acted on something that we don't have privy to yet. And my point is, is that a private property? I wanted to ask that question. Is that private property? Why is the city looking into complying with someone that, that, that has that type of view? And, and I just wanted to make sure that I see it very clearly in my own head that this is what this particular business owner wants to be able to do without any agitation, without any over-expressing or any of those kinds of things. Because the council has, the council has a rate, an antenna. And when that kind of rhetoric, rhetoric start filtering in through the council, our antennas goes up. And so, and not, and we're saying that if any business is consulting with you in that manner, then you should not present it here to council. That's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not against it, it's just the fact that I just didn't like the way that it was presented.
Any other discussion? Alderman Stacy?
So, you know, Culver's, the biggest fast food place here in Freeport, they got, took advantage of this money through a TIF. Now, here we come again with a different TIF. So, is anybody that wants to advance their establishment going to be able to use TIF money and get a yearly salary or a yearly whatever to do what they want to do for their business with our tax dollars?
The answer is yes. Please.
But wait, clarify, this is not about tax dollars. This is, this is tax...
Yes, this is the TIF, this is tax increment financing. I can go back and answer it. Anybody looking, if you have a business within the geographic area of a TIF District, you are eligible for TIF financing when you're expanding your business. And you're saying every year you're going to get dollars, that's what you're referencing. Well, when you go above, if you create and you build and expand your business, your property taxes are going to increase.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
But you're going to give it right back to anybody.
That's correct. When you're, that's why we're having this redevelopment agreement is to provide incentives for businesses to expand. Businesses are wanting, we're trying to, that's economic development, we're trying to retain businesses. We created TIF districts to help, for two reasons, to allow, to keep, to keep businesses, to allow them to expand, and the second reason is to attract new businesses.
So if I had a business downtown and I wanted to advance my business and add to it and make it bigger and, and fix the inside and this and that, I would have access to downtown TIF money?
You would want to come in and see, visit the city staff and make sure what you're doing is ineligible, eligible expenses, but potentially, yes.
Is it?
So, again, it has to do with your property tax assessment. If you're saying, I would like to paint the inside of my building, my answer to you would be, you're not doing an improvement that's going to increase the tax assessment so you wouldn't be eligible for any dollars. So you have to essentially improve your business so that your taxes, your property taxes are going to increase because you're paid on the increment of those taxes going up.
Okay.
So this business is investing $150,000 to build, expand their business, their taxes are going to be up, go up, and they're going to be eligible for that repayment.
Alderman Sellers?
Just to understand, the tax money comes from the taxing body of the, of the, of the group that, like, like the Lamb Road. It comes from the money of all the industries out there. Like downtown, it comes from the taxing of the, the stores and stuff downtown. And usually downtown, you would only be able to do like a facade, like the outside.
Sure.
Can't do the inside and make it bigger and all that. It's just the outside. So you can't get the taxing dollars and it doesn't come from the citizens, it comes from the taxing of the people that are in that TIF District.
Right. So you have a geographic area. This is the Meadows TIF District, there's a map. And essentially when this would have, the TIF District was created, they did a study. You hire a professional organization to do a TIF study. And when they do it, they look at it and they say, yes, this is eligible, there's blighted properties, there's properties that are lacking development. And so what happens is, at that time, there's a TIF base value for the prop, the tax assessment. And so any, any time that the property taxes go above that TIF base, it goes back and stays within the TIF District. That money stays to the city within a TIF District and it has guidelines on how the money can be spent. It could be spent for business expansion, it could be spent for business retention, professional services, things of that nature.
Alderman Shadle?
Yeah, the, the essence of this is they're getting back 75% of an increase in their taxes. So if this hypothetically, this building generates a tax bill of $2,000, their taxes would be $500. There's still going to be taxes collected. They're going to get a return from their property taxes of 1,500 out of the hypothetical 2,000.
Yes.
It's, it's, we're not laying out money to them, we're just diverting taxes back so that they have an incentive to make this investment. An investment that's always going to be there, when the 75% sunsets out, we get all that tax money then.
And it's on the increase.
Or I shouldn't say we, that taxing bodies get it.
It's on the increase. Alderman Stacy?
So, are you telling me that this business paid into the Meadows TIF?
Yes. Their property taxes are paying into the Meadows TIF, yes.
There's no further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Stacy? Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted seven to zero with one abstention.
Item number seventeen is adoption of Resolution 2025-91. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving the purchase of polytetrfluoroethylene or PTFE membrane disc for wastewater facility aeration basins from Dryden Equipment.
Thank you, Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know how familiar everybody is with wastewater treatment, but this is one step in the wastewater treatment process, it's called aeration. There are mechanicals in the bottom of the aeration tank that send bubbles of air through the effluent as it goes through the treatment process. Every seven to 10 years, these need to be replaced and we are at that time where we need to replace them. They are specific to the equipment that's in the aeration basin and the city's received an estimate from, let's get that name right, SSI Aeration, for $20,048, I'm sorry, from Dryden Equipment. The project was budgeted in the wastewater budget for 2025 and staff recommends moving forward with the membrane purchase.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Discussion on the resolution. Darren?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that we had $60,000 in the budget for these, for this year and so this is, we got a good price on doing the, the total amount that we needed.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, I know this is very necessary. It is something that we should let, you know, have no problem with. And if it's an annual thing, or, or, or is it not, I think it is an annual thing that we go through. It's not an annual thing, what is it, every five years or some?
Seven to 10.
Seven to 10 years, okay. But I know it's necessary, I don't know what the cost is, do we have a cost factor for all of that? Do we have a?
Yes, $20,000.
Okay, okay. Well, anyway, I know it's necessary, so I just wanted to see where we were at with that.
Alderman Stacy?
So, if it's going to cost $20,000, but Darren, you said we have 16.
Sixty, six zero.
Okay.
That's what was budgeted for this year. And this is just materials only, our crews actually do the replacement themselves.
But all of it to complete this project has been budgeted for.
Yes, ma'am.
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers is currently absent. Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted seven to zero.
Item number eighteen is the adoption of Resolution 2025-92. Could you please read this?
Resolution authorizing payment of an invoice from TNT Iron &amp; Metal for electronic recycling services.
Director Bridge?
Thank you, Your Honor.
I thought you were...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Director Bridge.
That's okay, that's okay. So, so that we don't have to ask these questions, my name is Brian, I'm the communications director. I was one of the three to four people here in City Hall that was in charge of getting an electronic recycling event together. Not only that, but I'm also tasked with kind of getting out to the public, not only stuff for electronic recycling, but also Refresh Freeport, which is our monthly dumping event that we do. The city of Freeport conducted an electronic recycling event where residents could bring electronic devices such as televisions and computer monitors to be disposed of. The city utilized the services of TNT Iron &amp; Metal to dispose of the electronic devices. This event was planned in coordination with other dumping events such as Refresh Freeport. Guild's Freeport disposal recommended TNT Iron &amp; Metal to be the main collector of electronic materials. At the event, they collected 1,096 screens and 3.2 total tons of electronic waste. Roughly 400 residents took advantage of this service and the city received positive feedback from residents and surrounding communities. The full amount of the invoice has been budgeted for and will be paid from the Health and Environment Fund, which the cost of this specific invoice is just over $27,000 and the budget is in the $300,000 range.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Sanders?
Where, where's the dumping ground is, is that with this, with this material?
So the, the event was held at the fairgrounds on July 19th and the dumping grounds, I, I do not know the specific area, the company, TNT Iron &amp; Metals, took the stuff away from Freeport.
So is this, are they currently still established, it's just one, one-time event or how does that work?
That's a good question. We are currently working towards a more regular event of this sort.
Yeah, and, and I know, I, I know that there should have been a notification that went out to the general public about this, we broadcast this and everything.
Yeah, plenty of people showed up.
Did they? Okay. And I'd like to see who's doing the collecting of anything. If there, is there resid, residuals that comes from this?
You're talking about money?
Yeah, because there's a lot of gold. There's a lot of gold and a lot of other material that can be broken down and be converted into monetary value.
The, the city of Freeport is not...
We're not just giving the factory away, are we?
This is scrap metal that they're giving away.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but we're not looking at the, the real intricate parts of that electronic equipment because there's value in there where the city could be recouping from or gaining something from it. I don't care if it went to a charity or back to the TIF or TIF or whatever the case is. We haven't, we're not doing a complete assessment of how this program should be brought up because we're saying, we're going to give you all our, our electronics that got gold and aluminum, whatever, copper, whatever the case may be, we're going to give all that to you. We don't, we, we just going to, just let you dispose of it and, and we don't have any recoup or residuals from all of that. Because it belongs to the city, it belongs to the citizens of Freeport, I don't care who picks it up, who, who gets it or whatever the case is, that is, that is a fortune that is being sent out of here. You know, that's all I'm just saying. Are we in a position to recoup anything?
So the residents of Freeport took their own stuff?
I don't care.
To the event.
I don't care.
No, I'm, in all respect, that's the way the event was organized and so we have full confidence that the residents of Freeport understand what they're giving up.
Okay, all right.
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye. And if I may, before I move on, tire recycling event this Saturday, same deal, tires, if you need more information, website, Facebook, email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, at the fairgrounds, yes.
And do you have a time? Eight o'clock?
Eight AM, two PM.
Thank you. Item number nineteen is adoption of Resolution 2025-93. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving transportation services agreement with Pretzel City Transit to sell punch cards at the library.
Thank you, Director Huffine.
Thank you. The library is always seeking collaborations and partners to help improve our services and resources for our community. Pretzel City Transit is heavily used by library users. We are seeking to make access to ride vouchers and punch cards more accessible by becoming a location for people to purchase ride vouchers and punch cards for Pretzel City Transit. Although the Freeport Public Library is a department of the city of Freeport, we are a separate taxing dis- Although the Freeport Public Library is a department of the city of Freeport, we are a separate taxing district. It is important to demonstrate the library's commitment to selling these vouchers to IDA, so we are entering into a formal agreement. The city's, the city of Freeport's responsibilities under this agreement are to provide reliable, on-time transportation to the Freeport Public Library users in a timely manner, and to supply the Freeport Public Library with vouchers and punch cards for sale at the library. The, the Freeport Public Library's responsibilities under this agreement are to maintain an inventory of vouchers and punch cards, to notate the vouchers to indicate they were purchased at the library, to maintain accurate inventory on hand and sold vouchers and punch cards, and provide inventory reports to the city upon request. The library will compensate the city monthly for all vouchers and punch cards sold. There's no impact on the city or library finances. The city staff recommend approving the agreement with the Freeport Public Library, and the strategic plan is support strong public and private partnerships.
Thank you, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers, discussion on the resolution. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy? Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
That resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Item number twenty is adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five ninety-four. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving purchase of two refurbished power load systems from Rowland Energy Refurbished Equipment and Clock Emergency Vehicles for the Fire Department.
Chief Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you this evening is the request to approve the purchase of power load systems for ambulances three and four. Ambulances three and four are in need of power load systems which securely fastens the stretcher into the back of the ambulance. When the vehicles were purchased in 2015 and 2016, the floors of the vehicles were built to accept this system, but the cost of the system was too excessive, was not added when the vehicles were ordered. So, the power load system consists of an arm that extends out of the back of the ambulance and loads the stretcher into the ambulance avoiding any manual lifting. More importantly, it also safely secures the stretcher to the floor of the ambulance, ensuring crash and rollover protection for a patient that may be on the back of that stretcher. Our two newer ambulances are equipped with this feature. So, that being said, it's more, it's important that the ambulances have the same similar equipment to avoid any confusion or operational errors during emergencies. We want each vehicle to be outfitted exactly the same, all the equipment is located in the same cabinets in the back of the ambulance. So, the initial plan or budget provided funds to purchase one new power load system. The key is new. One new power load system for this year for ambulance three, and then would rebudget another one for ambulance four next year. So, my guys did some research on this, and as we were obtaining pricing, we discovered that we could purchase two refurbished units for less than the cost of one brand-new unit. So, the refurbished ones also come with a one-year warranty, so do the new ones. So, it makes perfect sense to save money, buy some refurbished ones that are, operate just as well as the newer ones do. So, the financial component of this is the Fire Capital Improvement Fund will cover the cost of the power load system and the installation. The total cost for two refurbished power load systems installed, thirty-four thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-six cents. So, comparatively, the cost for one new power load system is thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So, we're already about sixteen hundred dollars less expensive for twice the equipment. So, no dollars from the general fund will be used for this purchase. So, the Fire Department is requesting approval of the resolution to purchase two refurbished power load systems for the back of ambulance three and four.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Oh, so moved.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Parker?
This is almost mandatory, it's a major safety issue for our firemen. And at thirteen, thirty-four thousand, if one of our officers break his back trying to do it, it's gonna cost us more than that to take care of it, so this is a great issue, and I'm very much.
There's no further discussion?
Just want, I just have one.
Yes, Alderman Sellers?
Uh-huh, I just wanna know, how long will it take for the, for these refurbished systems? How long will it take to get all this, or are they already ready?
So, they have them in stock already, we've already looked into and confirmed that installation is available locally from the ambulance provider we purchased our two new ones from, so this is ready to go as soon as we have your approval.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, I, I, these are not new items, am I correct? These, when you say, when this refurbished, that means that we're purchasing used items at one point in time? And, and I'm just curious, we couldn't budget new platform power load systems? I'm just curious why we're venturing into a refurbished-type unit? And whether or not it would be feasible one way or the other? Can we guarantee, because if it's anything that's been refurbished, that had been, that was an issue the very first time when it was brand-new? So, I'm just curious, I would like to know if you can bring some little clarity to me on that part.
Sure, I understand your concerns, and I had the same myself initially, but looking into it, these are as good as, as factory replacements. So, they've gone back to, to factory, they've been completely reworked, rebuilt, repainted, and to make us feel more comfortable, they offer a one-year warranty, and even the brand-new ones have a one-year warranty. So, this is being fiscally responsible, getting two for less than the price of one.
Okay, all right.
There's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Item number twenty-one, adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five ninety-five. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving purchase of Ferris ISX twenty-two-hundred mower with Kawasaki motor and sixty-inch mower deck from Peabody's North, Pecatonica, Illinois, for the Fire Department.
Chief Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, before you this evening is the request to approve the purchase of a commercial lawnmower for the Fire Department. So, the central fire station has nearly two and a half acres of land that we maintain ourselves. Each Friday, the lawn is, is cut by our members that are on duty and, and only interrupted by emergency calls. So, in 2018, the Fire Department acquired the lawnmower that you see up on the screen from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, IDNR. What they had at the time was an excessive property program that offered used or government equipment to municipalities that requested consideration, they applied for this. So, we did receive that lawnmower and is now fifteen years old and is experiencing several system failures. So, the hydraulic system is what's used to steer each of the rear wheels, that's why you'll see, it looks like handlebars by the seat, one steers the left rear wheel, the other one steers the right rear wheel. So, there is, it's hydroically driven, and the left steering mechanism, left wheel, is starting to fail. So, as you're going in a straight line, your hands are dissimilar, you're, you're not like this, your arms are like this. So, that's, that's a hazard to the person who's operating that, that lawnmower. Also, the frame and the mower deck have been repaired and welded numerous times in the past. So, again, I'd like to remind counsel that this mower does not belong to the city. It was, it was obtained from the IDNR, and it will need to be returned once we do acquire a replacement. So, discussion on this, the mower is fifteen years old, it struggles to complete weekly mowing tasks. We have been fortunate that it has serviced our needs for the past seven years at no cost other than maintenance and repairs. So, we looked into this, and yes, the mower does have to be returned to the IDNR, but that, that program no longer exists. So, we went to them trying to get a second free lawnmower, and they said, no, we don't do that anymore. So, we have to return that to their excess property program, and then so the finances of this acquisition, seven, seven different mower manufacturers were looked into, and staff has determined that the Ferris twenty-two-hundred model, the Kawasaki motor, best suits our needs and will, will accommodate us well into the future. So, the cost of this commercial lawnmower is twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So, there is money in this year's budget for this purchase, and it's also be funded by the Fire Department Capital Improvement Fund, using no dollars from the general fund for this purchase. So, also, I'd just like to add that this is the same brand of mower that they use in city yards for, for city properties. They stock various belts and filters and have experience working on this model, so we did compare this to John Deere, and this was the least expensive mower as well. So, that's why we chose this one, and we're proposing it to you this evening for approval.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle, discussion? Alderman Sanders?
Chief, for the, for the mower, we're considering the one that, that you put on the agenda here. Would this only be utilized for Fire Department areas and not being loaned out to other departments for, for their program or property or whatever the case is? Are we just gonna designate this directly to the Fire Department usage?
That would be my intent, yes.
Okay, all right.
Alderman Stacy?
I was just wondering, why can't Public Works go mow the lawn?
So, that is a question that I had considered and discussed it with Manager Boyer, and we realized that the folks that do the cutting, the lawn cutting for the city, two of them are part-time summer employees, and the other ones are mostly used in resurfacing streets and doing sewer work, and so they all have their other priority tasks to do. I've got my staff that are there, if they're not out running emergency calls, they can be perched on that lawnmower and they'll take care of it.
It would be nice, though, to have our firemen area taken care of, and I hope you get it, and I hope it lasts fifteen years plus.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Item number twenty-two is adoption, adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five ninety-six. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving to accept the conveyance of the property commonly knows, known as Seventeen West Stevenson Street from Mary Ann Garvins.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kurt, if there's any way you could do a Google map of the area, I'd appreciate that. Mary Ann Garvins has offered to convey Seventeen Stevenson Street to the city of Freeport for one dollar. We have an adjacent city-owned parcel that's right next door, used to be the Wave Salon, Aved Books location. This property will qualify the site for significant outside grant funding for a new downtown pocket park. The acquisition will complete site control, enabling the city to pursue park and placement grants. Also recently, Greater Freeport Partnership secured a large T-Mobile grant, I believe it's fifty thousand dollars. So, Ms. Garvins requests that the park be named after the historic building once located on the site, and its small, a small raised flower garden be included in the design for her use. Staff recommends honoring these and all other minor requests consistent with city policy. Upon approval, staff will proceed with the acquisition, update the plan to reflect these features, and apply for the Ozlight Grant, which is the one I am referring to. So, staff requests approval of the acquisition of Seventeen Stevenson Street for one dollar.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
A motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Parker, discussion on the resolution?
I do have one more.
Sure.
And I do wanna thank the GFP for their effort leading that, that transfer, thank you.
There's no discussion?
I would like to just say.
Okay, Alderman Stacy?
I just wanna say that this lady is a giver. We all make mistakes. We all lose our cool. But to give this property for a dollar speaks volumes. And so, I hope that that be acknowledged and recognized in more ways than one. And I want to be the first one to say, thank you.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, I, I have a, an awareness factor forming in my, my frontal lobe, I should say. I see you, I see you, Parker. But I have a, I have a question in regards to the fact that it was given for a dollar, but what's the initial reason why it was given? And, and the generosity that, that the city is supposed to look at this as a, as a generous kind of thing, but we have not looked at the cultural?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm talking right now. We have not looked at the cultural background of what I'm reading here in the memo, of the people that are, that are running this, and we're not looking at the full scope of why we're venturing taxpayers' dollars until we do an investigative probe of what's going on. And I'm looking at this memo, and I'm looking at the wordings, and I'm looking at the, I'm, I'm hoping the interpretation is not what I'm thinking it is, but from my, my position, if we're not aware of certain things, we should not vote on things until we have a complete clarity of the background nature. Listen to what I just said, the background nature and cultural aspect of this, even to give it as a generosity, what is, what will the city get in return? Because remember, the city cannot put itself in a position where it becomes a label to something that is not conducive to the city at large. You might say, well, he's talking in coding. Yeah, well, there is coding in there, and that's, and that's the reason why I'm bringing this awareness point up, is that we should be looking into these kinds of things and see it before we decide to do anything with any property for any reason. And I just, I just wanted to make sure that, that counsel is very astute to what is being talked about here today, on this matter, on this particular matter.
Alderman Parker?
Greater Freeport Partnership, this lot, there's three sections in it. They just had a grand opening and got big grant to fix the weather to make it a park. This is just adding thirty feet to it. So, it's a great thing that she did for us, and I'm sure it'll help Greater Freeport Partnership, and it'll make the area real nice.
I put it like this here.
Would you like your second?
I put it like this here, obviously, you weren't listening to me.
No, I wasn't.
And, no, that's my point, you weren't listening to me, so you didn't hear all the, all the, the subscripts or the subject matter that underscores the things that I was talking about that comes out of this discussion memo that I'm looking at. And if we have not looked at this memo, this memo clear enough to understand the interpretation of certain things, whether it's given to us or not, but what I am saying is, we don't wanna venture into something or be labeled something that is supporting something that is put in this memo. That's my whole point. And if we have not done a background study of the things that have been put in this memo and don't know who the characters are, we don't understand the process and the culture of this character and the background of this character, we need to do our study more efficiently, because words do matter. Because words do matter, you know? Words do matter. And I just want you to know, everything that we sometimes supposed to look at, we're supposed to define certain things that we don't understand. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
That's all I'm saying.
There's no further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
No.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? And Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, seven to one.
Item number 23 is adoption of Resolution 2025-99. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving independent contractor agreement with Ultimate Surveying Application Corp. For Wayne Duckman for consulting services for Community and Economic Development Department.
City manager.
Uh, thank your honor. As many of you know, Wayne has submitted his letter of resignation as a community development director. I asked him to stay on, and we worked out about 16 hours a week until we get his position filled, which is currently being evaluated. And we're in the process of interviewing candidates. So Mr. Duckman, for his own ease of accounting and so forth, asked that we use his LLC, which is Ultimate Surveying Applications Corp., as essentially to pay for his services at 16 hours a week through that, through that way. So staff recommends moving forward with an agreement with Ultimate Surveying Applications Corporation on a, basically a week by week, until we get the community director position filled. As of right now, it'd be about $1,040 per week, plus any additional hours that are required. So far, we haven't asked for anything. But if some emergent issue comes up, I wanted to make sure to include that in case we need his services in addition, so.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Stacy?
So do I understand...
Can I just remind you to try to put all your questions together instead of the back and forth, please?
Okay. So do I understand you to be saying that, um, we have agreed to, because I believe it's already happening, pay Duckman $140,040 for 16 hours?
$140,000?
No, $1,040.
Yes, per week, mm-hmm.
For 16 hours?
Yes, that works out to about his current pay and benefits at this time.
And also that you had nine applicants, qualified applicants, that have applied. So why haven't they, the interviewing process started? And why don't we have someone knowing that he was leaving in the 31st of July, lined up to pick up the pieces and carry this load? Because if he go over that 16 hours, then it goes up to how much an hour?
I mean, it goes to $90 an hour if we go over 16 hours a week. So the other question was, Wayne tendered his resignation, and we began the process of posting the job very shortly thereafter, within days.
In our conversation, you told me that you had nine qualified applicants.
Yes.
My question is, why haven't we started?
We have started.
The interviewing process?
Yes, it's a multi-phase process.
What does that mean?
There's more than one interview.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy?
No.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders? Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, six to two.
Item number 24 is adoption of Resolution 2025-100. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving the Americans with Disabilities Act's grievance commission to repair certain sidewalks in the city and authorizing the city manager to budget for such repairs.
Darren?
Good evening. This is the same topic that we talked about at the Cow, just bringing it back for a formal vote. We have the ramps at Park and Church that are not compliant. We also had a petitioner write a letter to the council that was read in public comment. I will review anything that anybody wants to discuss. I'm not going to go through the entire thing again. The intersection is not compliant. We started the ADA grievance policy to address situations like this. The commission voted unanimously to bring this to council for a resolution. And currently, we don't have funding marked because this program started in the middle of the year. I do think we might be able to have city construction workers do these intersections later this fall, as time permits. Otherwise, they would be pushed to spring. But it is a necessary outcome that needs to happen here. Again, we have, in the safe routes of school zone, we're next to an eye doctor, Parkview Nursing Home. This route connects to the park systems. And we have a petitioner that's actually driving his mobility device out in the street to have safe access for him and his family during their enjoyment of the community. So I think this is a needed project, and I appreciate your support.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion on the resolution.
I just...
Alderman Sanders?
Darren, Mr. Stego? Stego? Sir, I'm, I'm looking at your map, and I, I remember talking about the fact that we had this discussion last week, I believe it was. Sidewalk to Nowhere kind of program. And then I look at the agenda here today, and I notice something was added in this memo, in this particular, um, agenda, on this particular article, resolution, I should say.
Just let me clarify that. Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed?
This is exactly what was presented at the Cow, word for word. It's the same memo.
Okay, okay. If nothing's changed, then, um, when we're, when we're specifying certain things about the public property, I'm gonna put it like that. Sidewalks are public pop, property, right?
Uh, only the ADA corners.
Just only? Because that's not what it specifies inside of this ordinance, uh, agenda. That's the reason why I'm bringing it up. It doesn't specify or designate every aspect of what this is supposed to accommodate. And the reason why I ask that question is that, is it feasible for a homeowner or public citizen to make a formal complaint about a sidewalk that sometimes, you know, sometimes they are lifted, and you can trip and fall and break your leg, break your knee, or whatever the case is? This is public property. When does it become ownership property? And not only the ownership property, how do we take care of the concerned adjacent property owners? Concerns about people walking down this path or this sidewalk and possibly tripping? Because we, we heard the story many, for many years. We know that word, we know that's out there. And that's the reason why I brought this subject up. Will we be tentative to most residents or public property or public streets or sidewalks that will get attention to be rectified so these kinds of incursion does not cause any haphazard or anything of that nature to the, to the general public? That's basically what I'm asking. Because, because if homeowners or whoever wants something to be looked at, it's our obligation to make sure. It's not about, where, where do, where does that come in at?
Well, we just, we covered that at the Cow.
Okay.
The homeowners in Freeport own the sidewalks in front of their residence.
Okay.
Or their businesses. We only own the ADA corners, the city.
Well, when I, when I talked about, when I talked about sidewalk to nowhere, that's part of property, that's someone's property, sidewalk to nowhere. And you're, you're making a declaration of extending sidewalks. Well, that's what I'm getting. That's what, that's how I'm understanding that. If I'm understanding it wrong, then it must be worded wrong, or it's got to be interpreted wrong.
So we'll show you a couple pictures quickly, quick review. There we go. This is a sidewalk to nowhere. There's no ramp that crosses the street to go out here. This is called a carriage walk, and they were popular back in the 90s, 80s. But they're no longer legal because a handicapped person that is visually impaired could go down this sidewalk, and they would not know that they're, they can't cross the street.
Okay, you're...
That's a sidewalk to nowhere.
To nowhere, okay. That's your definition of a sidewalk to nowhere?
Well, there's also the sidewalks to nowhere. Kurt, could you go to the St. John's picture, please? So that's one definition of a sidewalk to nowhere. This is another sidewalk to nowhere.
That's what I'm talking about.
That's not our responsibility. That is the responsibility of the homeowner to finish that sidewalk, not the...
Okay, that subject, that right there did not come up in the last discussion.
Yes, we discussed it.
Okay.
That's why I put that sidewalk to nowhere.
I know it came up to, for discussion, but it was addressed as a sidewalk to nowhere, according to what I was listening to. And that's the reason why I'm mentioning it, because there's a lot of residents throughout the city that has sidewalks to nowhere in front of their residence. And that's the reason why I'm addressing it now. Because if you can do that, if you can address it here at the council, that means that it must be something that we're considering doing. That's what I'm looking at.
Our current ordinance is have the ability to cite homeowners and/or businesses for not extending their sidewalks. We have never chosen to do that in the city of Freeport. Financially, it's not feasible for all these people. But, but the city could cite someone for not connecting their sidewalks. This sidewalk, I called it, goes to nowhere because it stops here. It doesn't connect to the church property, and there's no sidewalk across the school property either. Those choices were made many, many years ago, and it is not the city's responsibility to connect those.
Okay, so we do have that part of an ordinance.
Alderman Sanders, your ordinance has far exceeded.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that the citizens of Freeport are getting all the accommodation that they need.
Okay, but do you understand this isn't about all the sidewalks in Freeport? This is about an ADA commission?
I'm just saying that people have a complaint or an issue. Just like I brought up the elevate, the lift elevation of sidewalks. People can be in a hazard situation in front of their property, but they don't have the finances to rectify the problem. But the point of the matter is, where does the city come in at? Because if somebody trips and falls, somebody is liable.
The homeowner is liable. It's on your homeowner's insurance.
So do, oh, okay. So homeowners are liable for these kinds of things? Okay, I got you.
If there's no further discussion, madam clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, eight to zero.
Item number 25, approval of a bid. Could you please read this?
Bid opening on July 22nd, lift station on Walnut Avenue.
Manager Boyer.
Uh, thank your honor. Ferregham Design and Bid Sanitary Sewer List Station, Force Main Piping and Gravity Improvements for Lamb Road Area Sanitary Sewer Flow at the request of the city. The existing sewer system has an issue, a significant issue near the landfill perimeter and cannot be accessed for repairs due to IEP regulations, landfill closure requirements, and extreme depth of the sewer main from grade. This sewer area carries a significant flow to the city's interceptor on a daily basis. And a public bid opening was held on July 22nd at 10:30 a.m. City staff received four bids for the project from Martin and Company, Entreck Group, Kelsey Excavating and Fisher Excavating. Fisher Excavating was a missing required bid item, so it was deemed non-responsive. And Kelsey's Excavating was the lowest responsible bidder at $2,847,451.50. Kelsey Excavating is currently working on the 2025 street, city street project, and has completed other sewer force main work for the city of Freeport with positive results. The project completion is estimated for June 2026, taking into account equipment lead times. This project is planned to be paid for with land and road TIF funds, and staff recommends moving forward with this bid.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion on the bid. Alderman Sanders?
On the bid?
On the bid.
Okay, I, I feel absolutely, absolutely feel that there shouldn't not even been a bid entertained, first of all, on the landfill. Excavation pro, pro a bid far as work that is going to be supposedly done without a complete survey and evaluation to determine the, uh, the future of the landfills that are out there at the landfill on Walnut. There has to be information to the reason why we're working on a landfill sewer line that is possibly connected to the interceptors. And I don't think a bid should go out for any of that kind of a project until we have done a complete evaluation and study on that particular landfill. And that, and that, and bids should not even be considered before we have done our own homework here at the council. And I think, and until that happens, then we're, we're, we're walking into a blind wooded area. That's my, that's my assessment of it. And I think the people of the city of Freeport should be knowing, should know that there's intercept, there's sewer lines out at the, at the landfill that has not had a study to determine its existence. And that thing could be still open to the city, the public, causing all kinds of habits and problems. So I think it needs to be reevaluated. I, I don't like this, I don't like an incomplete study to determine whether or not we should be bidding on anything. And I'm, I'm surprised a bid like that even hit the floor, hit this council floor. I am so surprised in the derelict of duty that we have not done anything to make that discovery happen. And I'm looking at it here on the agenda, and I, and I'm saying to myself, where's the rest of the background noise? Where's the rest of the background information? Why haven't we had a formal discussion about these issues? We're just throwing money away without doing what we should be doing here. And I don't like the fact that it's being dismissed as if though we don't have a, a problem that could cause us problems within the near future. So I don't get it, alright? I, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just frustrated with that.
Alderman Stacy?
Are you asking us to vote tonight on giving Davis, Illinois,
That's the bid.
That's the lowest bid.
I can't, I can't believe I'm here.
Help me understand.
It's not Davis, Illinois. That's where the contractor, that's their home address, is Davis, Illinois. It's Kelsey Excavating. They're already doing work for the city of Freeport. They're doing our street projects. And they were the low responsive bidder to the project. So yes, that is exactly what we're asking, is to award money to them as the low bidder.
Any other discussion?
I would like to clarify something, if I might. We had an entire meeting at the Cow last, last week that we went over these exact topic with the council that was here. We went through the flow and the gallons. And this has been an issue since city manager Bukas was on the staff. He's actually the one that started the project. And there is a need for sewer flow and force main out there. And it's resulting in the landfill, not be, not because of the landfill. The flow problem is through the landfill. This station will bypass the landfill. And all the landfill flow from the leachade system will go into this station, as well as all of the Lamb Road Tiftistic and any expansion that happens in either direction, east or west.
Mike?
Okay, now remember, this is about the bid.
Well, he wasn't talking, oh, well. Alright, mayor. You know, this, this, this stuff can become comical if you don't know exactly what is being said. And then it'll just fly right over your head as if though you understood just what he was just saying. I'm just gonna, if it's not about the bid, I just want to make a comment about what he just said. Is that okay? Uh, without the term, without the word of bidding coming out of my mouth, I just want to make a comment about what he just said. Is that okay? Because he makes comments about what we say.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. All right. That whole landfill situation divert, uh, going around the situation, but you never talked about how you're gonna disconnect from the interceptors or, or how you're gonna abandon that whole system throughout the whole process of doing anything. We're just gonna, we're just gonna abandon something that has nowhere to go, and yet it is still alive, but yet, uh, and it's still functionable, but yet we're still gonna make an investment type to divert the line away from its, its normal path already to accommodate what type of flow are we trying to demonstrate here? Because if it's not broke, then why trying to reroute something that is not broke? I ju, I just don't get it. And, uh, and so if we're closing the landfill down, if the landfill is being closed down in excavation and all these kinds of things are gonna take place over at the landfill, then we must do something about the existing sewer lines that are flowing to the interceptor out of all places. And, and not talking about the disconnect. There has to be a disconnect there, because if not, there could be infiltration at the intercept, at the intercept, wherever this thing dumps off to. I'd like to know how you're gonna reroute it and re, reconnect it. The new, the new, whatever you're thinking about doing. I'm, I'm just baffled with all of that.
So if there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, are you, did you have something?
I've wanted an answer.
The answer is it's all in the plan, and it's in the details, but the details are, are too great to explain at a council meeting.
That's what I thought.
These questions should be asked throughout the week so they can be answered, not at this floor. That discussion would take hours.
You got that right.
But you haven't asked me any questions except for here.
I won't, because I would.
Alderman Sanders, you need to stop being out of order, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mayor.
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy?
No.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
No.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes five to three.
Item number 26 is another bid. Could you please read?
Bid opening on July 30th, CD 007, 2025, demolition of eight properties.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, and, excuse me. Uh, eight properties were published in the Journal Standard on July 24th for a bid opening, um, that occurred on July 30th, uh, at nine o'clock in the morning at City Hall, and it was for the demolition of eight blighted properties. And on July 30th, staff received bids from four contractors. And, um, based on the submitted bids, staff is recommending, um, issuing a contract for all, the demolition of all eight properties to Alber and Sun Earthworks for the amount of $100,610, as they are the lowest responsible bidder.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion on the bids. Alderman Stacy?
The money used for these demolitions are coming from what?
So, yeah, I put the, I put that in the, in the memo as well. Um, scroll down here a little bit.
Better yet.
Yeah.
When we had a meeting at the library, there was money that we had from the east side of town. Money and grants that were given to us to destroy property over there. Park Street, Crocker Street, Wilbur Avenue, Adelbert Avenue are all on the east side of town. We had money we had to use or lose. Why are we using that money for those streets when we have money that we have to use or lose?
I'll make it a little easier to see because it's a little bright enough to see. But maybe you can see it a little easier now. Funding for the demolitions comes from FEMA floodway grant programs.
Okay, but wasn't that FEMA floodway grant program for housing on the east side of town?
Correct. So the demolitions are funded by the FEMA floodway grant programs. And then these are the houses that, uh, the property owners receive money for, um, for selling their property, and the city is demolishing it now as part of the FEMA program.
But Carroll, Prospect Terrace, Pleasant Street, and Williams Road, wherever that is, it's not in the FEMA, it's not in the area where the FEMA money was granted.
So funding for the demolitions comes from the Illinois Housing Development Authority Strong Communities Program, which the city has now spent most of it, but there's still money left. That program is, uh, $300,000 for the demolition of blighted properties and the FEMA floodway grant program. So if it's on the east side ineligible, it receives the FEMA floodway grant program money. If it is not, it has fallen into the Ida Strong Community Program, and that's where the funding comes from.
But what about the, the, what was it, 10 or 12 houses that was not on the east side of town that were scheduled, scheduled to come down this year and none have come down?
I have no idea. Well, you'd have to give me specific properties. We now have 17 properties that are, this is the first eight, and I have another nine. And this, uh, this department, I believe, has another, another bid opening coming for 10 more properties, so.
I, this is, I spoke with you and city manager Boyer, and I asked for a list. So are you telling me this is eight of the 17 on the list?
I would say probably yes. I'd, I don't have that list in front of me, but I could, I don't know what properties.
I'm still waiting for it, too.
I don't know what, I mean, I could tell you that there's eight properties being demolished in this bid package. There's about to be nine more coming up after this. And then my staff is working on another 10. There's gonna be another bid opening. So that would be 27 properties probably in the next two months that are gonna be demolished.
Okay. Madam Clerk, Alderman Clem?
Just 'cause it was mentioned before, uh, Wayne, uh, many of us know about the properties on the east side, but could you explain, uh, 'cause some of the renters have come forward, and could some of these houses be rebuilt, so on and so forth? Tell them the status of what these houses, the condition of them, just so we.
Well, the short, the short answer is, uh, any property on the east, east side, these properties, I've, I've walked through the majority of these personally, uh, because I have to let in our asbestos contractor. So many of these properties have a water line through the house, actually on the walls. Many of them do. Uh, many of them also have soggy floors, um, from water damage. So practically speaking, they're beyond repair. Uh, but then if you want to go into actual government regulation, FEMA, uh, at the federal level is not going to let, uh, a government entity like the city issue permits for fixing a property for, excuse me, for more than 50% of its value. Um, so there's a practical implication, which basically says the buildings are gone too far, but there's also the, uh, federal government, which is saying you cannot redevelop it. Another common complaint, I've read some of the complaints from our community, is that there's poor living conditions. Um, the truly unfortunate part is, many of these properties are picked up. Now, the ones up here that were talked about, the non-FEMA east side properties, the sad thing is, many of these properties are picked up, uh, for back taxes. They're not properly repaired, and people are renting them. And then the city ultimately comes by, has to do inspections, and finds out that these properties that are so far gone are not completely repaired to an adequate level. And it's sad that, um, our community is actually renting these properties. So many of these properties are, all of these properties are so far gone that they cannot be repaired.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Alderman Sanders?
And what you're also stipulating that there, that, uh, that these properties are, since they're at the point of demolition, uh, there shouldn't be any occupiers, even in those buildings that we're, as we speak today. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct.
And that, and that we should be, uh, moving forward to having those property, uh, tore down? Uh, have we had any complaints about, uh, any of the properties that we're tearing down to be reconsidered, uh, for rehab or rehabilitatedation and that kind of thing? Have we had that kind of, uh, uh, expression down at the development, at the community development to reconsider anything, uh, that someone was interested in?
All of these east side properties here that you're seeing here
Mm-hmm.
were purchased at a closing. Paperwork was signed, and the property owners, um, if they lived, they received appraised value plus $31,000 if they lived in the property during the time of the flood. The other properties up here are either fast-track demolitions, or they are purchased off of the back, or purchased from the county for back taxes. So any property up here that is purchased for back taxes, was owned by the county, the city owns it, there's not gonna be complaints. Any property that is a fast-track demolition has had proper notice, and there's due process for that property owner to file a complaint and stop demolition. So at any point in time, every one of these properties has had an opportunity to talk about development, et cetera, and it's, they're no longer at that point.
Alderman Sanders, please remember, we're talking about a bid.
Huh?
This is about approving a bid.
Okay. I mean, you know, sometimes I have to, I have to, uh, navigate myself through the process.
Okay.
Uh, even though it might be inconvenient to, to a lot of folk that are listening. But the thing about it is, I'm, we're sticking to the, to the bidding, uh, portion of it all. Only thing I'd like to know is, um, when, um, when, when, when you're looking at bids for these properties that are supposed to be demo, demoed and not allow, and, uh, people have not any complaints about these property and reconsideration, are you receiving anything about this, these properties that should, should make you say, mm, uh, question it or reconsider or anything? Is anybody making any kind of proposals to the, the community about these properties at some?
No, there is nothing substantive about these properties that's being proposed for redevelopment, et cetera.
Okay. All right, then.
Okay, Alderman Johnson?
I just wondered, what makes the difference in the price of the bid? Is it just the size of the house, the material it's made out of? Or what makes the difference between?
Your biggest, sorry, go ahead. I apologize.
No, that's it.
Um, your biggest, truly, the biggest gap that you're gonna see up here on prices, majority of it's gonna be asbestos abatement. So every single property on here has an asbestos inspection. And on the bid packet, there is a list from, uh, a contractor that says what has asbestos on the property. And if there's asbestos within the property, that could more than double the price of a demolition. So if a property doesn't have asbestos, it's gonna be a quick, it'll be a much lower price.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please take the roll on approving the bid.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons? And Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Item number 27 is another bid approval. Could you please read this?
Bid opening on July 30th, CD 008, 2025, demolition of nine properties.
Director Duckman?
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as promised, here are the other nine properties, um, that are up for demolition. And these nine properties were published in the Journal Standard on July 24th, and the bid opening was held at City Hall on July 30th at 9:15. City staff received bids from four contractors. And, um, this, based on the submitted bids, the lowest responsib, lowest responsible bidder was Alber and Sun Earthworks, and they submitted a bid for $121,570 to demolish all properties. And staff recommends issuing them the contract as the lowest responsible bidder.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Clem. Discussion on the bid. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker? Who is absent? The motion passes seven to zero.
Item number 28 is another bid. Could you please read?
Bid opening on August 1st, 2025, CD 009, 2025, fence installation and board up at 114122 South Liberty Avenue.
Director Duckman?
Hey, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so, talk a little bit about what we have going on here. Um, have a site plan here.
Oh, the Raleigh building?
Kind of showing what, what's going on at the Raleigh complex. Uh, as everybody knows, the Raleigh building is in poor condition. There has been some, um, stone falling off into this alley. Um, there's also broken windows around the area. And recognizing that, uh, staff has worked with city manager Boyer and discussed options on how we can better secure the site. And so, um, we put out to bid a site plan illustrating what we could do to, uh, secure the site. So essentially, there is a six-foot-high chain link fence that's gonna go around the Raleigh complex. Uh, it's gonna connect, there's an existing garage here, another existing building here. And essentially, it's gonna close off the entire, uh, structure with a six-foot-high fence. There's gonna be one six-foot gate here that they could enter, or city staff will have a key to enter, uh, in hopes that we can better secure the site. If we scroll down a little bit.
Kirk, please.
Um, I kinda show you some of the windows. We're also, part of this bid is also going to include a board up. So I've, I've drawn in red the building, the, um... Okay, he's going to full screen mode. Essentially, I showed the, essentially, it's gonna be all of the first-floor windows on the Raleigh complex are going to be, I, I highlighted in red here what it's gonna look like. These windows will be boarded up. And then if you scroll up, there'll be a few more that'll be boarded up. That basically, essentially, all of the windows on the first floor will be boarded up. And so, the city staff, um, at the bid opening, it was published in the Journal Standard on July 27th, and the bidding, uh, bid opening occurred on August 1st at 10 a.m. at City Hall. And the city staff received bids from three contractors. Um, Fence Peoria was eliminated as they did not submit the required, uh, all the required documents. And, uh, the lowest responsible bidder was Winter Construction at a, uh, proposal of $78,000. And staff is recommending moving forward with Winter Construction for the installation of a fence and board up of all of the first-floor windows at the Raleigh building.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion, um, Alderman Stacy?
If we're putting up a fence, why, um, do we have to worry with the windows if there's gonna be a fence around it, the whole building? And better yet, why not just tear it down?
Well, the demolition would probably push close to $10 million. So with budget season coming up, might be a good idea for you possibly propose that. Um, but until then, securing the site is the best, uh, best plan of action. Other than just a fence, it's important that staff is trying to secure the area as much as possible. So we have broken windows and glass, and it's an easier way that if somebody were to get in through the fence, they could still climb into the building. So we're doing everything we can. Staff wants to do everything they can to secure the site and protect it, um, from further vandalism.
So this is gonna be, what, a four-foot fence?
Six-foot-high fence.
Six-foot-high fence. Um, link or?
Chain link.
Alderman Sanders?
Uh, Mr. Duckman, that building been in place for how many years?
Probably close to 100 years.
Yeah. And the main reason why, and, and let, and I want the general public to know the main reason why it hasn't been considered to be demoed at this time. And, and what's the, and, and, um, the out, the outbreak or the outcome or the environment that this particular building could bring unto the city, and why haven't we made proposal for grants to do it the proper way? And if there- And if there's a reason why that is, kind of educate us
Sure.
a little bit on why this building is still standing, and we're taking $5 to try to mend it up with Band-Aids, and, and there should be appropriate grants for this kind of hazard. This building is a complete hazard, it's been here, like you say, over 100 years, but been out of commission, I'm going to say about over 50 years, you know, that kind of thing. But the point that I'm making is, how come we have not looked into this particular matter instead of throwing Band-Aids up against it, and, and see what the outcome is that, that we are considering? Because that, that building has been an eyesore to the city of Freeport for decades, and we need to be trying to be tentative even about that, as opposed, if we can take $10 million and find, find grants for $10 million to tear down a building, we should be able to take $10 million to erect housings, apartments, complex, or whatever, where they should be designated. I'm just saying, are we considering any of those aspects at this point in time?
Couple things, well, you had a lot there, so I'll try to get, I'll try to address all of your comments. The first comment is, when you walk down this alley, I don't know the last time you walked down this alley, it's full of stone, and what it is, is the cap up here, it's likely, people, we, we know people are breaking in to this area, we have evidence of that, we have proof of that. There's quite a bit of vandalism from people breaking in, and it's likely that they're pushing all of the cap and stone into this alley. And right now, after observing and knowing that, I, I find it just irresponsible to continue to allow, God forbid, somebody walks down there and that stone hits a person. So, at that point, the most immediate action to do is to lock off this alley and the surrounding area. That's truly the honest reason why this is, this quote unquote Band-Aid is being done is to protect the public. That's the, the, the utmost honest answer that I can give, right there. Now, we're talking about demolition. Certainly, that's a budget discussion to bring up with City Manager Boyer, that if the city wants to try to find $10 million taxpayer dollars to demolish, and I'm only giving you the estimate, it could be more. It is, I mean, if the city demolishes this, I heard older person Stacy say city, taxpayer dollars, yes, if the city demolishes this, it would be city taxpayer funds. Now, is it possible that we could go after grants for this demolition? Yes, and we can investigate that. Yes, that takes time. Yes, it takes time. Other part to that is brownfield reuse. Other communities have had success in redeveloping, this is a brownfield site, an old industrial building that has lacked use in 50 years, let's say, okay? This, I have been part of bringing developers, potential developers into this site with ideas of redevelopment, I have. It's a tough sell, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that that's an easy sell. So, the tough decision city staff has is, and should, should also look at in parallel at the same time, is looking to redevelop it, which would eliminate the need for a demolition, or also, and, I'm saying parallel, so at the same time, and also investigate grants for its demolition. And that's what we're doing. That's exactly what we're doing.
I, I'm glad to, I'm glad to hear that we are on the move with that. It's, it's something that has been put on the back burner for decades, and nobody has brought the subject matter up, and I think it's a good time for the whole community to, to take that into consideration and say, well, hey, we're doing everything else, we're throwing lift stations and water wells and places like that, and we're raising grant, we're getting grants for all these kinds of things, but one thing that we have not focused on is the haphazardly, haphazard things that is being in our, in our community, that it really is an environment problem.
Yep.
It's not going to go away, and, and the thing about it is, we need to pursue grants that rectifies and take care of these kinds of things that we need to get rid of. I can see that, I can see the environment of this, of these buildings caused health breathing problems within the city without the city doing a full evaluation of the, of the air of the city. I don't even think we test our air here in the city of Freeport, to be honest with you. We should start, but, you know, I don't think we do, but just to get, just to get an idea of what a building can do to the city without knowing that certain agents are floating, floating around out there in the community, we need to do a study on that as well. I'm just venting right now, but.
Understood, understood.
Yes, we want to get back to this is about a bid. Alderman Johnson?
Do we have any bids at all, how much it would cost? Have we actually put it out for a bid, how much it would cost to demolition that building?
We've not, but what was our demolition, what was the, what did we just receive for two, the dry cleaner downtown?
So, the, yeah, the dry cleaner in the building next door that the city owns is going to cost a little over $1.2 million to demo just those two buildings, and they're not built anywhere close to the solidness of the structure. And I wanted to remind everyone, when we got the $1.7 million, that was the by far largest award in the state of Illinois to take down any buildings, they don't have grants of $10 million to take down a building this size, so the city will be footing the bill at some point, along with a grant
Mm-hmm.
to take something like this down, it's a very large cost here, it's a complete concrete structure.
Yes, necessary.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, did you have another one?
Yeah, I just have one more. The low bidder, that bid, they didn't include some information, can we not ask them for that information? Or no, that's not something we can do?
We looked in, actually, I looked into that matter with council and discussed it at length, and we looked through our rules and regulations, and it was determined that that's not, it's not fair to the, you know, during the open bidding, in an open bidding process, it wouldn't be fair to have everybody else submit a complete submittal, and this happens quite a bit, where somebody forgets a document, and they can't come back later and submit it. That's common practice in, not just Freeport, but any community. You know, we list out, if there's 10 items you have to submit, you have to submit all 10 items, or else you're thrown out of the open bid.
Alderman Sellers?
Yes, I just want to know when all the fencing and everything is around, are we also going to have enough signs around it to keep out and?
Yes, we, we will have signs, no trespassing signs put up, and anything else necessary.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Stacy?
No.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
She's gone.
Oh, I'm sorry, she's absent, and Parker?
Aye.
So, we have six to one passes.
Item number 29 is another bid, could you please read this?
Bid opening on August 1st, CD 010 2025, asbestos abatement for Hangar D at 2155 East Airport Road.
Director Duckman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I have a couple pictures coming up here shortly, but essentially, what we have is Hangar D is at the Alberta's Airport, and it's quickly deteriorating building, and it truly needs to be demolished, and staff is going to self perform this, Public Works Department will self perform the demolition, however, asbestos abatement has to be done by a licensed contractor for that work, and so, staff put out a bid for asbestos abatement for Hangar D at Alberta's Airport, and it was published on, in the Journal Standard on July 27th, and the bid opening was held August 1st at 10:15, and staff received bids from two contractors, and the one contractor did not submit a bid bond as required, and so therefore, their bid was eliminated, and the staff is recommending going with the lowest responsible bidder of Environmental Management Services of Iowa, and they submitted a bid of $27,750.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle, discussion on this bid. Alderman Sanders?
I understand that bid, but there's an environmental, there's an, there's an environmental issue with that bid, and what you're saying, they are certified to do the asbestos for demolition, for demolition? They are certified to do that?
Yes, that was part of their submitted, they were required to submit their licenses as part of this bid. So, when we opened it, and Clerk Anderson was a witness, can attest to it, had seen that they submitted their proper licensing.
Okay, any other city property have received any bids for demolition with asbestos?
Okay, we're not going there, this is about this particular bid at the airport, not all the other stuff.
I, I don't like what you just said.
You know what, you, you keep going on in a direction that's not according to what is on.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about a bid.
You just asked about a bid for the entire city.
I don't care.
So, we are talking about a bid.
If what goes for one property
Hangar D.
goes for all property, there's, I'm asking a question about a bid.
Would you like to ask a question about Hangar D?
Why are you directing my focus to just Hangar D?
Because that's what the agenda is.
Hangar D is not the only problem.
It is the only thing that's on this bid.
Okay, alright, Mayor. You, you.
Is there any other discussion?
You are asserting yourself into.
Is there any other discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the bid, or take the role?
You can't be doing that, Mayor.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
No.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to one.
Item number 30 is another bid approval, please read this.
Bid opening on August 13th, resurfacing of 18th Avenue.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Recon Corporation worked with the city of Freeport to reach an agreement for the development of the solar field at the end of 18th Avenue, that's in the arcade. As part of the agreement, Recon Corporation was to assist with roadway improvements to 18th Avenue, because the idea is, they're, they'll be using 18th Avenue to do the installation, they'll be running trucks in and out of there, and the road was somewhat deteriorated, and the point is to restore the road once they're completed with the solar field project. So, as part of the agreement, Recon Corporation will contribute $440,000 toward improvements on 18th Avenue and provide the city of Freeport with improvement plans prepared by Bowman for the improvements to 18th Avenue. A public bid opening was held on August 13th at 10:00 AM at the city of Freeport, city staff received three bids for the project, one from Martin and Company, one from Helm and Fisher's Excavating. Fisher's Excavating was the lowest responsible bidder at $511,212 and zero cents. Fisher Excavating is currently working on the 2025 city water and streets projects, and has completed other street improvements that, within the city of Freeport with positive results. Project completion is estimated for October of 2025. This project is planned to be paid with the $440,000 in funds from the solar developer, Recon Corporation, with the remaining amount through local funds. It should be noted that $133,000 of Fisher's total bid is contingency for unsuitable soils that may be encountered during the construction. Staff recommends moving forward with the bid.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers, discussion on the bid. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders is absent, Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Item number 31 is reports of department heads, finance?
None tonight.
Public works? Fire?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I know it's been a long meeting, but I feel I have the need to acknowledge and recognize two of my paramedics from a job well done. On August 14th, ambulance one was dispatched for a elderly male who, a gas station, Shell Gas Station in Glean, and those folks thought, something just isn't right with this gentleman. So, our paramedics responded there, they took the time to have a discussion with the gentleman, find out why he was in our area here, where he was from, and then they looked even further to get, gather his name and phone number for family members, so one of the paramedics phoned police dispatch, ran the gentleman's name, it turned out that he was endangered and missing from City Chicago for four or five days. He had no idea how he got out here, why he was here, so they checked him out, they phoned the gentleman's daughter, they were elated that he's finally been located and he's safe. The ambulance crew, Adam Holtz and Nathan Stepp transported the gentleman to the hospital just to be checked out, and that's where the reunion of his family members took place, so. 84-year-old gentleman disoriented to know how he got to Freeport from City Chicago, so those turned out to be a good outcome for the gentleman and my, my paramedics. Thank you.
Thank you, police?
Nothing from the police department.
Thanks, library?
Nothing tonight.
Community development?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
IT?
Nothing.
Airport? City manager?
Just one thing, Mayor, I just want to reflect on the, the wonderful work that was done on 18th Avenue. I know it was kind of the last thing on the agenda, but that is one way the city was able to use our work with the various solar contractors to flip that around and turn that into new infrastructure, so I just want to thank all the staff that were involved with that negotiation, it's excellent job.
Then I just want to remind everyone about Take Advantage of the Tire Recycling, if that's something that it could be helpful to you, and then reminder of two events this weekend, just Paint the Port is on Friday night, as well as Eats and Beats is Friday night and Saturday night, so two great events in the downtown at the Art Plaza and in the streets. Alderman, Stacy?
Nothing.
Alderman Shadle?
Yes, thank you. Last week, the committee of the whole meeting, there was mention made, probably comment at the end, that statements that myself and Director Stieckel had made that were, to quote, lies, and it had to do with the lift station on Walnut Road. Our comments were that it was, has been talked about for two years, and I just wanted to mention that I did a little digging, and there was a committee of the whole meeting on Monday, January 9th of 2023, where there was discussion regarding Walnut, Lamb Road, Forest Main and Lift Station. And a week later, on Tuesday, January 17th of 2023, it was passed to a resolution approving engineering agreement with Fairgram for Design Services, so that's all, thank you.
Alderman Sanders?
On that, on that particular note, that I was just hearing other, with other issues, nothing has not been conformed completely. We have incomplete work that needs to be reevaluated and to be studied, and, and I don't care how many times we talk about the subject matter, it doesn't matter, long as we're understanding what it is that the city is trying to push the citizens of Freeport into, and we need to be, not only evaluate what council is doing, but we need to evaluate ourselves. Far as, far as anything else, are we cohesive on any matter that the city might have on the agenda, and do we all conform together to come to a resolution of anything? And that's what I've been, I've been sitting here for over two years now, and, and I, and I watched, I learned, I figured out how the game is pretty much played, and, and we need to change our thinking, and this is why, I, I don't know how many minutes I got, but if you shut me down, I'm going to go up to the podium and talk some more. But the thing is, we need to relook at ourselves in the mirror every, every day to say, are we doing this citizens of Freeport justice? Because I sit here and I listen to lies sometime, people flagrantly lie about things and don't come out and tell the whole truth about things. I don't call no names, but the point of the matter is you know who you are, and if you're not serving the people of the city of Freeport, you should get off the council, you should go do something else with the rest of your time, and, and die off into the wood, and maybe grab a fishing pole or something like that, and. You should go do something else with the rest of your time and, and die off into the wood and maybe grab a fishing pole or something like that and, and dwindle away the rest of your life. But this is how I feel at this point, and I'm quite sure a lot of our constituents feel the same way. Are we looking at, are we considering the people that we're here, that voted us, us in here to, to make a decision-making, proper decision-making? You know, that's something that needs to be reevaluated amongst ourselves, and we should ask ourselves that same very question. And you're gonna hear me talk about stuff like this on occasion, when I feel that we're doing things that is not with, 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 in the fines of the people. And they can, people can criticize me that stands opposition of what I'm talking about, which I don't care. I don't care about none of that stuff. It's just the fact that am I, am I talking to the people to gain their trust about whatever I learned that I will expose to them or divulge to them? So they will be as educated as I am, because I'm learning. I'm learning the ropes around here, and, and we need to stop it.
Alderman Sellers?
I would just like to say, I know we had a lot of people that came in and was talking about, you know, the housing and the, and the rents and all those things. And I totally get it and I understand, because I've been on both sides. I've been a single mom renting, and I've also been a landlord, so I do understand. But we have no control of what people charge on their rents. That's just like if I wanted to sell my house, I don't, they can't tell me how much I can sell my house for. So I do understand, and my heart goes out, because I hate that it's happening. But we as city council, we cannot tell people what they can charge for rent, and my heart goes out to everybody. But like I said, I've been on both sides. I've been a single mom renting, and I've been a landlord. So I just wanted everybody to know that we do have, we have compassion on what's going on, but we have no control.
Alderman Clem?
I agree a hundred percent with Joy. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
My heart also does go out for those that they've raised their rent on. It's a horrible thing. Also wanted to remind Second Ward, we have Neighborhood Watch meeting at three oh oh two Farmdale Lane at six thirty p.m. on Thursday evening.
Alderman Simmons? Alderman Parker?
Yes, just a reminder, we have our Neighborhood Watch next Monday night at six o'clock.
That concludes two public comment. Okay?
We probably should do the other people.
Yeah, I'm, if you, wait one second.
I'm so sorry. She was though, Mayor. She, well, I'm sorry, Akia.
Go ahead, Debbie.
You've, you've got, oh, I, I am so sorry. I have an email from Carol Krupke. "I've lived in Freeport my entire life, and I've lived in my current location for almost twenty-two years. I've lived here for so long because it's what I can afford. While at the moment, I am not one of the people who are being threatened with rent increases, I would still like the members of the council, Mayor Miller, and whoever else is necessary to work on placing a rental increase cap for the residents of Freeport. Fixed incomes are just that, fixed. With the cost of all utilities going up, a reasonable increase in rent is a desperate need. Emphasis on reasonable. Please do whatever you can to help those of us who are already struggling and just don't want to be homeless. Carol Krupke."
Kia? Kia?
That what I was gonna say. There is, before you say that you can't do nothing, you guys probably should dig and see what you can do. It's easy to get up here and say what you can't do. You guys do research for everything else. We had so many ordinance paths, so many things looked at, dug in for the benefit of the other side, let's quote that. It's amazing that you can get up here and honestly say that you can't do anything, and you can research it. You can find out exactly what's happened, because whether you believe it or not, this guy, this guy is gonna come through. His plan is to get Section eight people from Chicago, and if you think the crime rate is gonna go anywhere but up, this is gonna affect more than every, not just these guys, they might move next door, down the street, around the corner from all of you. Opposed to the ones that, let's say, let's, let's see that the home rule benefited that you guys don't have to live here anymore. Or say, or whatever you do. And that, that means that you guys can't use home rule to, to benefit the community, but you can use it to say that Mayor Miller doesn't have to live here, Wayne don't have to live here. You, you guys can use it for all of that. And, and I'm so tired, let's get on another topic. I'm so tired of hearing shovel-ready sites. Nobody is coming here. Is this, you gotta be rocket, nobody is coming here. This, this is a public online meeting, and it looks a mess. We got Darren impersonate himself as F H M worker. We got Wayne tearing down the city for no reason at all. And we got a bunch of Neighborhood Watch meetings, and ain't nothing again, watch. I'm just trying to figure this out. This ain't rocket science, man. Dig in and do the diligence for the community, or like he said, get up and move around. You have something to do. You have a job to do. You work for us. They, Rob, he's such a nonchalant attitude, he don't care about nothing. Nothing. You have proved that so many times. Nope, you have to be invited to walk up to. Nobody wants to talk to you. You sit up there like an angry ball right now because you getting your name rung out. You get read every time somebody say something that you want to speak on. You have to be approachable. Nobody wants to talk to you, bro. That's just period. You have to be, you have to be approachable. Not have an attitude when somebody asks you a question that you have to repeat. Repeat it!
Next.
My name's Cheryl Altman. My question is, why is Wayne getting, well, for sixteen hours, it's sixty-two dollars and fifty cents an hour? That is three to four times more than what an average person makes in this town. And it's a shame, but you guys voted for that. You're wrong. Also, two point one million dollars for Pretzel City Transit. It's three dollars in town each way, out of town, it's six dollars each way. But the worst thing is you forgot to mention that all those vans and buses are given to the City of Freeport for free. And then not, not even to mention all the donations, because I used to drive the bus. I could bring in four hundred dollars in donations every two weeks. Easy. So where's that money? The worst part is you're making that money, and you got people out here ready to strike, but you won't give them a raise. For shame on you guys. And next, Wayne, you say that you walked through all these buildings. Wrong. You made me get an engineer, a structural engineer. You didn't like what he said, because you said my building was structurally sound, more than most. But yet, you sit there and gonna bash and tear my place down? You got the, the roofs are falling in on the rally building. You got frickin' trees. Plus, you already got a five hundred thousand dollar grant for that place. So what'd you do with that? And why are we getting Elbers and Sons? Because Mayor Miller, you related to them. Your mom was an Elber. That's a conflict of interest. You have, your nieces, matter of fact, I got a picture with you and Sheri at her nephew's invitation, and I'd be glad to show it to you any day, if you want to see it. You know, it's really a shame that it's who you know around here. And I don't know who's more smug or arrogant, either you or Rob Boyer, but I don't know why, if we got a mayor, why do we need city manager? If we got him, why the heck do we need you?
Next.
Hello, I just want to introduce myself and talk a little bit about what's going on and see what we all can do to come together and help. My name is Jocelyn. I'm a mother and a longtime Freeport resident, and someone who is now, along with many others, fighting just to keep a roof over our families' heads. First, I do want to thank you, Mayor Miller, for responding to my previous emails and suggesting that I fill out the inspection request form here at City Hall. I do appreciate the acknowledgement and the apology for my hardship. But respectfully, sympathy does nothing to provide housing. It doesn't stop evictions, and it does nothing to prevent the rent hikes that are already being enforced right now. Pied Piper Realty has taken over properties once managed by Chapman Properties and others, creating a monopoly of sorts. Many of us are now being told to sign new fixed-term leases within seven days or face a thirty-day notice to vacate. The rent increases are as high as fifty percent. These are not proposed numbers. These are actually happening. Some families are seeing jumps in rent from six hundred and fifty dollars to thirteen hundred dollars overnight. These are imposed with promises to do light maintenance. And to look further the math, Freeport has an average wage of about fifteen dollars an hour, or roughly twenty-four hundred dollars a month before taxes. That's not enough to cover the rent increase, especially when you factor in groceries, utilities, childcare, gas, and healthcare. It's just not realistic. In addition to these points that I've came, come here to make, we are working families, and we can't meet these necessary requirements. How are individuals on social security or fixed income supposed to do that? The point is that they can't. These requirements are designed to push people out. And understanding that there's only so much that can be done, because the state of Illinois bans of rent control, it means that what's happening here is completely legal, and that's the problem. But that doesn't mean that the council is powerless. I'm here to ask you to act, and urgently. Some things that you can do are pass a local ordinance requiring sixty or ninety days to notice before significant rent increases or lease terminations. Also, you could conduct immediate inspections of properties with sharp rent hikes to ensure that they meet health and safety codes, especially for any property raising rent by more than ten percent. You could even host a public forum with tenants and landlords, so our voices are heard, and to hopefully avoid the lack of actions done by landlords to help tenants with what matters to those living in these properties. My last suggestion is to pass a resolution urging the state of Illinois to lift the rent control ban and return the power to cities like ours. I'm not asking for special treatment. I'm asking for fairness for families, seniors, and working people who just want to stay in their homes, especially as we send our children back to school. We deserve better than the, we deserve better than to be pushed out of the city that we've helped build. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I noticed I've never been here to a meeting bef-
Can you state your name, please?
Ernestine Edman. I've never been here to a meeting before. I've watched you guys sometime on TV. But I did notice that you have prayer before you begin. Is that right? I am a believer in Christ. I don't know what's gonna happen from this day, because my heart is just so heavy right now after seeing all those comments of people that is gonna have to leave from where they're living right now, because they can't afford it. And I just want to, I'm, I'm not gonna talk too long, but I want to say this to all of you. I stayed, I stayed, and I listened to all that you guys had to say. And those are some important things. But to me right now, what's most important is not seeing kids out in the streets. Nowhere to go. That's what hurts me. That's what's important to me right now. And so if you believe in the God of heaven, I want to see all of you do more than what you're doing. I know you may not can pull a string here or there, but it is something you can do as our leaders in this community. And I want to say this, and I'm done. I know that none of you are in these positions because somebody just voted you in. I know that the God of heaven allowed you to be in these positions. And he expect you to do what you're supposed to do. This is not gonna be good for nobody in the City of Freeport. There's a lot of families, a lot, that has been hurt by this. And so in the days to come, you're gonna feel it. We might feel it, but you're gonna feel it too. And I want you to keep that in your mind, that you're not here just because somebody voted you in. You're here because God put you here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sue Cook, Winchester Drive. I was home, and I was watching online. And thought, no, no, no. There are children, there were children standing here begging for their home. In Freeport. We've never been a distressed city before. Don, you know that. This city was flourishing and beautiful and huge and good, and there were homes and places for people. There were not children standing in front of the city council begging for their homes. I know you can't do anything with the landlords. You can talk to them. I know you can talk to them, Rob. I know you can. You may not be able to tell them where, excuse me, to put, or how much to charge. But you can keep the kids and these people in their homes. You can. You're powerful. You cannot say that you're a pastor and not be able to do this. You are powerful. You are the City of Freeport Council. You are powerful, and Freeport cannot be distressed. And here we stand distressed. The second thing, for God's sakes, for the people that are disabled in this town, don't take nine one one away from them. Rob, give them the five bucks. Five bucks for a life. Five bucks for a life. It could be my husband, it could be me, it could be Cece, it could be the mayor. We've had head-ons. Here I am crying. I'm sorry. I'm really sorry. But we've had head-ons. We've had multiple head-ons. I've driven that road. I've had to drive off the road to avoid head-ons. Guys, we can't have no nine one one in Freeport. We can't have roads where our cars go into the potholes, and we have to pay thirty-two hundred dollars for an undercarriage, which has happened. We can't be distressed, and we can't let kids be out in the street and these people lose their homes. We just can't, because we're Freeport. We never were distressed, Tony. Excuse me, Mayor Miller, we never were distressed. We never were distressed. We don't have to be distressed now. Thank you for letting me stand here and cry. I'm very sorry.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to make a public comment.
Well, then you have to get up to the podium.
Do I?
If you want to speak as a citizen.
That's, that's the protocol?
Yeah, it's a public comment.
Okay. All right. I don't want to pick up too much time. But I feel the compassion of members. Yeah, I feel the compassion of those that are in distress. And if we have a heart or any empathy for what the community brought to us tonight, we should look, like I said earlier, we should conform as council people for the greater good of the people. We should conform to come together on a topic issue that is hurting folk. If it's hurting people within our community, we should stand up and lend our voice to all of the causes and distress and the anxiety that folks are going through because of this one particular issue. I like to see us all gather together, have an executive meeting on issues. It doesn't have to be executive. It could be the whole force of the City of Freeport. Making a, having a common cause to rectify something that we have, as they say, the power we have to come together to help folk who are having issues. I, my heart went out. I'm like this woman. I'm about to shed tears because of what we're lack of doing. And that we have, and they voted us to make sure, voted us in to make sure that the accommodation of people can be taken care of. We have avenues. We have pathways. We have areas that we can go into to seek out whatever it is that our community needs. And the fact that they don't know, they're not educated to finding these programs, and we're not lending our opportunity to help these, to help establish any programs that actually help people. I, I have not heard anything from our council that talks about a program that can benefit, benefit everyone that has a- benefit everyone that has a desire to want to better themselves in this community. I don't want to see people talking about, I'm gonna be homeless. How do you come to the Council of Freeport and someone standing before you talking about, I'm losing everything, and, and I don't have no place to go? How could we just sit in our seat and after we adjourned tonight, have no way of talking to one another, calling each other up, say, hey, we need to get a, we need to have a hall, a, a town hall meeting or some form or some, something to talk about that helps to help people? I'm talking, and, and if, if there's something like that going on, everybody should be involved.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing, Cecilia?
May I do it from here?
Yes, I think that would be an exception.
You know, I don't know what we can do. I know that there's things that we have to do. I know that there's apartments out there that's not worth half of what they were already charging, and to go up double is ridiculous. But as renters, you have rights. And you have a right, I don't know, we might need inspectors to come in and look at these houses, because they have to be valued at a level to be charged what they're charging. And so I don't know what we can or can't do, I'm gonna find out what we can or can't do, but one thing I know how to do, and that's pray. So Father God, in the name of Jesus, hear the hearts and the cries of your people. Father God, make a way out of no way. We're looking to you for a miracle. Yeah, you changes not. So just like you fed many with five fish and two loaves of bread, I'm asking you to work a miracle in this city on behalf of these, your children, your people. Help us as a council to do any and everything we can do to make that difference, to show ourselves strong, to show the value we have and the value that we carry. Give us the words to say and the ability to do what needs to be done, and we'll be sure to give you all honor, glory, and praise in advance, for victory is ours. And I stand on that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Is there any other public comments? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
Second. A motion made by Shadle, seconded by Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night.